Madam Clerk, how are we doing on the telephone? Both? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting of the City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everyone in our City Council audience as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. This is a special policy session on the Cannabis Regulation and the Tax Act. We are going to meet from 5:00 until about 10 minutes until 6:00 so that we have time to shut down and bring things back up for our regular 6:00 meeting. If we need to continue the discussion at another time, we'll arrange to do that. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. A notice was received by two members of the Peoria City Council in accordance with rules established by ordinance number 16,142, and the members will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the members' electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the City Council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the members to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the City Council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting members present. Those members attending electronically are Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Velpula. Would everyone please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
One nation, under God.
Madam Clerk?
22-349 is a communication from the City Manager and the Deputy Corporation Counsel with a request for a policy session on the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, and we need a motion to open the policy session.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager? Oops. Okay, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two and a half years ago, we sat around the horseshoe and had very similar discussions on cannabis, and now here we are to talk about where we are with medical cannabis, where we are with recreational cannabis, some of the policy decisions that were made in 2019, and then from listening to your conversations, the types of policy decisions that you would like to revisit perhaps this year. So I'm going to start with just a brief overview of medical cannabis. In 2014, it started out as the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program Act. It was intended to be a pilot program, and that became permanent in 2019. It allows Illinois residents who have qualifying conditions to register with the state in order to obtain cannabis for medical use. In 2014, there were 12 qualifying conditions. When I did this presentation for you in 2019, there were 35 qualifying conditions, and when I checked yesterday, there are currently 53 qualifying conditions on state or on record with, or 52 qualifying conditions with the state of Illinois that allow someone to become a medical cannabis patient. That allows the patient to purchase 2 and 1/2 ounces of cannabis every 14 days. Now you'll notice there that it says a physician's certification is required. It is not a prescription. It is not a prescription. I will, that bears repeating because many employers, the city of Peoria included, have had employees that have attempted to submit cannabis as an eligible patient prescription, and we have denied those costs because it is not a prescription. It is a physician's certification. It looks much like a driver's license, and the doctor, you have to have a physician-patient relationship, and the doctor will certify you have one of the 52 conditions, and they submit that to the state of Illinois. In the additional material that we provided, I thought it was interesting, the top five conditions that people seek medical cannabis for, number one being chronic pain, number two being PTSD, number three being migraines, number four osteoarthritis, and number five is cancer. Medical cannabis patients in Illinois are allowed to home-grow five cannabis plants. Medical cannabis patients are the only ones that are allowed to home-grow cannabis plants, and it is substantially less expensive from a tax perspective to be a medical cannabis patient, as it is subject to the 1% state tax, but otherwise, it is generally exempt from any local taxes. It's treated as any other qualifying drug. Statewide, there are a little over 235,000 approved applications. Interestingly enough, I found that 1,000 of those are actually under the age of 18. And when you look at the conditions for youth that qualify them to be patients, the number 1 through 3 would be autism, PTSD, and seizures. There are a little over 138,000 active patients statewide. They use 55 dispensaries, and you can see that the 2022 retail sales by the medical dispensaries were staggering amounts of money, $237 million, and the total retail sales since November of 2015 for just the medical cannabis dispensaries has been a little over $1.5 billion. Specifically looking at Peoria, we have Trinity Compassionate Care that is a medical cannabis dispensary. In 2019, it had 1,220 registered patients. In 2021, it had a little over 2,800 patients, about 133% increase over when we first started tracking those numbers. Again, if you drill down into the numbers for Peoria County, we have a little over 1,500 active patients. That's because in 2021, the state actually changed how medical cannabis patients can register or obtain product from a dispensary. They used to have to decide on one dispensary and use only that dispensary. When Illinois put the Intellitrack system in place, which allowed them to better track these patients, they're allowed to use more than one. So therefore, when you look at the Peoria County data, you can see the difference in the word from qualifying to active patients. For regulation, we do have zoning restrictions for medical cannabis dispensaries. They're treated generally like pharmacies. They're special uses in all commercial districts, permitted in industrial districts, prohibited in all other districts, including form districts, and we do require a business license similar to what we require for recreational cannabis. Moving on to the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, that went into effect January 1 of 2020, and it legalized recreational consumption, possession, and the sale of cannabis products in Illinois. What that allows is for adults that are 21 or older, they can possess cannabis for recreational use, subject to some limits based on your residence or non-residence status. They can have 30 grams of cannabis, 5 grams of concentrate, and 500 milligrams of a cannabis-infused product with THC. Those limits are cumulative, so it doesn't mean either or. It means you can have all of those at one time. One question that I think comes up a lot is after those products are purchased, where can they be used? They're allowed in private residences, and if authorized by a municipality, they can be consumed onsite at cannabis-based businesses. We have not yet addressed that as a council. We'll come back to that later this evening for discussion. The list of where it's prohibited is much longer. Public places, motor vehicles, school grounds, near someone that's under 21, near an on-duty school bus driver, police officer, or firefighter, as well as any business or landlord can prohibit on private property. Individuals are allowed to transport the legal product they buy, so when they're in a motor vehicle, they need to be in sealed and tamper-proof containers. Another interesting fact is since this is still illegal on the federal level, they are not allowed on federal grounds. We do not have any federal parks in Illinois, however, although the Federal Park Service, I believe, does run the Lincoln Historic Site, so product use is not allowed apparently at the Lincoln Historic Site in Springfield. In 2020, when we started, or late 2019, when we started talking about cannabis dispensaries, this was the map that the state put out, and it has 75, I believe, potential dispensaries on there. I think when we added them up, it's actually only 74 because there'd been a mistake, and they'd included the Illinois Tollway Authority as a potential district, but then quickly realized the mistake with Illinois State Police Districts in the rollout. So there's actually 74, I think, that were issued. But in 2020, we issued, the state issued 58 initial licenses, and then it got really messy because in 2021, there were initially supposed to be 110 licenses issued. In 2022, there were going to be some additional licenses issued. They all got wrapped up in litigation involving the various lotteries that were to occur. Then there were to be corrective lotteries, then there was additional litigation on how the corrective lotteries were going to be held, and those licenses were all really held in abeyance until the spring of 2022, when we got some direction on how they were going to be released. The governor in March of 2022 said that he would issue 55 conditional licenses, and that would go across all 17 BLS regions, and those licenses were going to be for social equity applicants. What we discovered is substantially more than that were issued, but they're still outstanding at this point. Even though they've been issued by the state, none of them have yet operated. So let's talk just for a second about recreational cannabis statewide. This is the state map. It's not really a very good map. It's also in that additional information. It's a little bit misleading because this includes the medical cannabis dispensary in Peoria, but not sure why this is the map the state provided. You can see that in fiscal year 2020 for the state, the first full year that cannabis was legalized, they had a little over $400 million in sales. By 2021, that was $1.1 billion, and in 2022, $1.5 billion is what the state reported in cannabis sales. Illinois has a seed-to-sale system so that every plant that is grown has an RFID tag, and when those products are sold, they can ultimately trace it back to the exact plant in the cultivation center that was, that grew it. Right now, there are approximately 185 licenses available. There are a little over 100 of those are social equity applicants that are looking to cite their businesses. If you drill into some of the additional material that we provided, it's interesting that usable marijuana is the number-one product typed, but it is a close second to extract for inhalation, and then infused edibles are also very popular. In Peoria, we have two existing cannabis facilities. The location at 3125 North University is our medical and recreational facility. When the state first authorized recreational licenses, those that already had a medical dispensary license were offered, really the first opportunity to open at their medical site, and then they were also offered the opportunity to have a secondary license, which Trinity took advantage of. I believe 2301 West Glen is in District 4, and 3125 North University should be, I believe, in District 2. Now, the zoning board has also approved three additional special-use permits. The City Council has also approved three special-use, additional special-use permits. You can see those were at 5001 North University, 4600 Brandywine, and then 3929 West War, which was most recently addressed by the City Council. Last week, the Zoning Commission also had an application for 7628 North Route 21, and that will come before the council on October 25. That application was submitted by Cardinal Ventures LLC. All those additional special uses that have been approved by the zoning board or the city or a combination of both are all cited in District 4. So the policy decisions that were made in 2019 were to allow recreational cannabis to implement some reasonable zoning restrictions. At the time, council did not feel like they had enough information, and the market was a bit uncertain, to make decisions about onsite consumption, and that was specifically reserved. They did impose a tax, and we did decide to require a business license. Generally, recreational cannabis was allowed for all types of cannabis-based businesses, including craft growers, cultivation centers, dispensaries, infusers, and processors. The city has only seen applications for dispensaries to date. The City Council also adopted some reasonable zoning restrictions. It required minimum distance limitations of 500 feet to a childcare facility, school, areas where youth would be recreating, and churches. Much like medical cannabis facilities, they are permitted in industrial, they are special use in commercial, and they are prohibited in form districts. I note again that onsite consumption was reserved. Not long after the City Council adopted their licensing ordinance in 2019, the state of Illinois revised Smoke-Free Illinois to amend the code that would allow some onsite consumption of a vapor product if it's authorized by the local government, the business maintained a specially-designated area. That area was limited to those that were 21 or older, and the door to that facility or to that special area had to have a lock on it. There is some litigation pending right now that would allow a city to issue temporary event licenses for cannabis clubs and tours. The City Council did impose the 3% tax in September of 2019. I think this is the exact example we gave in 2020, or in 2019, and it looks like I should have updated it just a little. I think the county cannabis tax is actually slightly higher than 3%, but it does give you a rough idea that there's about a 40% tax on $100 worth of product. The tax structure is based on the THC level, so if the THC level is over 35%, it will be taxed at the highest rate. All of the revenue from cannabis sales go into the Cannabis Regulation Fund to pay for expenses of the program, and then the Illinois sales tax is broken out to 35% of it going into the General Revenue Fund, 25% of it going into the R3 program, 20% goes to the Department of Human Services for abuse and prevention, 10% goes to the budget stabilization, 8% goes to LGDF, and then 2% goes to a public education campaign. The city did require a business license, and you can see the fee schedule there. Again, to date, we have only had applications for a dispensary, and both of our dispensaries are in at least their third year of licensing with the city. So after hearing discussion over the last few weeks, we attempted to formulate some questions to help guide the discussion of where we think you may want to go in 2022, that being, does the council want to prohibit or limit recreational cannabis? Does the council want to add any zoning limitations? Does the council want to address onsite consumption? And does the council want to amend the ordinance to address any social equity issues? So with that, I will open it up for any questions or discussion.
Sure. Thank you, councils. Very good information. We can start with questions or go right into discussion.
Mayor Ali, I have some questions.
Okay. Proceed, Councilwoman Jensen.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, council, for the updated report. I appreciate it. I think it was at my direction last week. So I appreciate the information. I do have a couple of questions before we get into the policy issues. It's my understanding from the material and from your presentation, there's 185 licenses available. Have those already been approved by the state?
Councilwoman, that is correct. 74 of those are dispensaries that are not social equity applicants. The remaining licenses that were issued in this year's lottery would all be social equity applicants. Those have all been, at least the social equity applicants have been conditionally approved by the state, and they have 180-day timeframe to find an appropriate site and to be up and operating before they receive a full license.
Okay, and what's the number of that, that are, that have conditional approval?
110-ish?
Oh, sorry. Okay, got it. I wasn't sure if that was a different number. Okay, I got it. And I think it's worth noting, when we last visited, that we were operating under the understanding that there were only going to be up to three licenses available in our district. But now that potentially is unlimited, correct? There's no longer a limit?
There is still a limit. We reported back that seven social equity applicants could cite in our BLS region. So just to back up a little bit, in 2019, when this was rolled out, there were going to be three licenses that would have went to our BLS region. Two of those did cite, and now there are potentially seven social equity applicants that could cite in our BLS region, an additional seven licenses, I should say.
So that's in addition to the three we already have? And is that, is that also in addition to the five that are waiting for approval from the council? Or I'm sorry, the four?
Great question. The special uses that have been approved by the City Council, some are on the list of social equity applicants that receive state licenses, some are not on the list of applicants that received social equity licenses. So we believe that for some of those licensed applicants, or I should say, special-use applicants, they may have sort of jumped the gun and had a application in the pool with the state, but were not one of the successful winners of a license. So at least two of those are not on the list. One of them is on the list that the council's approved, and then the one that will be coming to council on October 25 also does have a license from the state. So in the near future, there are only, there is only one approved special use that could apply for a city license, and then depending on the action the council takes on October 25, if that were to be approved, they could also apply for a city license.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So two of the four that are pending have state-approved licenses. Is that right?
Yes, and just so we're all talking, I'm going to go back to the slide. So a special-use permit was issued for 5001 North University. They do not have an additional license where they could cite a facility in the city of Peoria right now. 4600 Brandywine, they do not have a social equity license. 3929 West War Memorial, they do have a conditional social equity applicant, and the application that's coming to council on October 25 does have a social equity conditional license.
Okay, and then as a follow-up, what is the process? Is it a quick and easy process potentially for the two that have been approved but don't have a state license approval?
Yeah, good question. 5001 North University, I guess I should clarify that one a little bit. That is an existing facility that's located in East Peoria. That is New Med East Peoria LLC. They did ask for a special-use permit from the city. However, after they obtained the special-use permit, we had no further communication with them. They did not apply for a business license. So I suppose it's possible at some point, if they wanted to attempt to locate their facility here, they could ask for the license, they could go through the licensing procedure. I don't know if that is their intent or not. As I said, we haven't heard from them. For 4600 Brandywine, I can tell you, I find it unlikely if they aren't in this round of social equity applicants. I don't see them, at least from the state process, being able to obtain a license easily or quickly. We still have to struggle with 100 licenses, with the 100-plus licenses that are out there right now that have to get cited.
Okay, as a follow-up, why is the city, why is the zoning commission and even the council, why is this, these coming to us if they don't have a state license yet? I mean, why were they approved? Isn't that one of the requirements?
Yeah. It's a little bit of a chicken-and-an-egg situation that they have to show that they have a potential zone, a proper zonium for a business that they can locate in. So they do need to show that to the state as part of their application process. That is not, for a regular dispensary license. That is not the case for social equity applicants, who, one of the provisions that, as a social equity applicant, are given, is they have some additional time to locate, to find a suitable location for their business.
Okay, I guess if that's not part of our requirement as we revisit this, I think that that should be a requirement. We should not be considering or approving any special-use permits for a business that doesn't have a state license to operate. So that's my two cents on that issue, but I'll move on. My other, my other series of questions is about the, I guess, the tax, the 3% cannabis tax that we charge. Is that capped by the state?
3% is the maximum tax that you could impose.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Keep in mind, that is your, if I may, Councilwoman, thank you. Keep in mind, that is your city cannabis tax. You still have a city sales tax on top of that.
Okay. And do we know, or could we get that figure? I know you've given us some figures for, like, state revenue, but I'd like to know what the city revenue has been from these dispensaries for the last three years, what the city has. I know I've asked that in the past, but that would be helpful as we're considering all of this.
The difficulty with that is that we can't disclose that publicly because we only have two operators, or one operator, in the community right now, and the Illinois Department of Revenue doesn't want that disclosed until there are multiple And the Illinois Department of Revenue doesn't want that disclosed until there are multiple applicants or multiple facilities in your community to be able to disclose that tax information.
You can provide that to the council member.
We can, we can get you that, we can get you the information, but we just can't disclose it publicly.
Okay. I would appreciate that information.
Councilmember Jensen, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions waiting, so I'm going to move to the next question, and we can circle back around.
Okay. Could I just ask one follow-up related to that? Could, when you give us that figure, Manager Europe, could you also give us a comparison to what, what we get for the liquor fees, or the revenue from liquor? Or is that too overburdening?
No, I think we can, I think we can get that information for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This may be completely impossible to answer, but I'll ask it anyway in case you do have some information. I notice, obviously, every year, over year, the amount of new patients is increasing. Is there any kind of an idea of what a threshold for a facility is? Or, you know, how much can be sustained? Or is it oversaturation? Just kind of curious if there is kind of any baseline out there, expectations?
That's a great question. When we talked about this and learned about it in 2019, the state projections were it would take five years for the market to fully bear and play out what true consumption volume and consumption data was going to be, because it was very easy for those that were medical cannabis dispensaries to add on recreational licenses, because they already had a supply chain, they already had their transporters, they already had those processes in place. Other dispensaries had to struggle to sort of keep up with that. If we're talking solely about just medical patients, I think you will continue to see it to grow. If you look at nationwide, it is something that more and more states have approved from a medical basis, and you do see a substantial increase. At the same time, the state is running the medical cannabis program, they're also piloting parts of it as an opioid reduction or avoidance program, and we provided some of that information, where you can see that there are some statistics that are proving that that's bearing out from a medical perspective. Was your question just about medical patients? I'm sorry.
Either one, just curious, you know, is there, does the need grow as we create more facilities or approve more facilities? Or do we reach a point where we've allowed more than is really necessary? Just wondering what, if there's any idea what the need really is either way.
I'm not sure we know yet, and as the states around Illinois continue to perhaps loosen their cannabis restrictions, you may see some of that demand lessen, because people won't be crossing the border into, you know, our border towns, or even Peoria, to obtain products that they can then obtain in their own state. So I think when the state said it would take us five years to really understand consumption levels, I think they were pretty accurate with that.
Thanks, that's helpful.
Councilmember Reganbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going back to the special use permitting process, this is perhaps a question for Director Doolin or Assistant Director Allison. It's my understanding that a special use permit, from the time it's approved, is valid, you have two years to activate it, if you will. Do we know off the top of our head, the 5001 North University? That's got to be closing in on that two-year mark, doesn't it? I mean, we, we don't need to answer that specifically, but my point is that even though these permits have been issued, that doesn't guarantee, and perhaps to address Councilwoman Jensen's concern, we could cut that, could we cut that in half to a year? To say if a special use is not used, utilized within a year, that the permit goes away?
We could for this, and I think that that would be reasonable. Anybody that is looking to have that before they can get their state license should be up and operational within 180-day timeframe, so that would seem like a very reasonable proposal, if we want to cut that to a one-year period for cannabis-based special uses. I know that they, all three of the ones we listed are still active, but we will report back on what those exact expiration dates are.
Thank you very much. I also think you alluded to this in your previous comments, that whether there's federal action now with the president issuing some pardons, and there could be some momentum in Congress, or some implications that would have national impact, which would drastically change the landscape. So we need to keep that in mind as well. And just an antidote about the demand for, for the facilities. At IML, I was at a session on retail enticement, and you know what the number one, commercial developers, the number one thing they're locating right now is car washes.
We see them all over.
And we've, we've had that discussion many times around this horseshoe, but car washes, that's a national trend, and we think we've got more car washes than we could possibly use. The number two thing is chicken restaurants, and I think we bear that out as well. But I just say that to say that as far as supply and demand for it, I want to be respectful of those who are professionals in that area, because I, I can assure you, I'm not. So, thank you. I'll probably have some follow-up later, but that was.
Sure. Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few questions here, and I'd like to make a motion also. Mr. Manager, the last couple of years, we had line items for revenues from cannabis. Has those lines disappeared?
No, we have a, we have a cannabis use tax that we get from the state. It's a state dollar amount. I was just looking at that, where we collected, when it first started in 2020, we collected $67,000 on that. In 2021, we collected $156,000. In 2022, we're estimating that we're going to come in with IML's estimates at about $203,000. And then next year, it'll be roughly about $283,000 for that cannabis use tax, so.
Just to make sure I understand, is that the 1.75%? Or is that the full 3%?
No, no, that, this is the use tax. This is the, this is a state use tax that gets collected statewide and then distributed out from the cannabis proceeds that Deputy Corporation Counsel Kupuska was just talking about. The sales tax issue, we'll get you those numbers, which is a separate matter, and we'll calculate that.
So the sales tax, are you going to get the numbers for the 3% and the 1.75, or the total 4.75?
It'll be 2.75. You have our 1% state, state sales tax, plus the 1.75 local home rule sales tax, and the 3% cannabis tax.
So that's 5.75, then? Is that correct?
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Under the zoning slide here, I've noticed the last few days, there's only one permitted use that we have in Peoria. As we grow these numbers, I think it's important that, as our attorney just said, that these facilities are like drugstores. I mean, they seem to be popping out where high-traffic areas are at. I'd like to change the permitted use, that's the only one we have in industrial park, to a special use like the rest of the city. So my, I'd like to make that as a motion, please. So move, move to, move to change the permitted use to a special use for industrial, industrial district. That'd be my motion.
Sir, a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab.
I have a point of order. Can you make motions in a policy session?
Madam Mayor, I think it may be most appropriate for us to take all this feedback. For example, changing the expiration date of the special use permit, prohibiting them in the industrial zoning districts. We will bring that back in ordinance. So I think tonight, we're just looking for feedback, so that we know how to bring those amendments back to you.
So it would be just a direction for you, for the staff, then? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. What's wrong? All right. Okay. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few questions here. Corporation Counsel Kupuska, when it comes to candidates seeking approval for a site application, do they have agreed upon purchase agreement for the site that they're looking to purchase, or a lease agreement?
For the special use permits that we've, the most recent two, they have one or both of those, yes.
Okay. I definitely agree with Councilman Renenbog of us looking to change the duration of the special use permit, because I think it puts us in a weird predicament, where essentially we are having our, our hands tied by someone who may not even ever materialize. And then also, too, I want to be respectful for other potential business owners in this space that may be looking to set up shop here in Peoria. And if we are looking to possibly come up with a certain amount that we allow, if we are essentially waiting on someone to, you know, finally get their act together, we may turn, we may lose businesses. And so I think we definitely need to consider that. I want to talk also about, I know there was some discussion with Councilmember Jensen a couple of weeks ago regarding the social equity applicants and their ability to be able to establish themselves less than 1,500 feet of an already-established dispensary. Can you talk a little bit about where that language came from, as you inserted that in our local ordinance, please?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Excellent question, and we did some additional research, because like other communities that have been flooded with this, the results of the additional licenses being issued, we were struggling with the citing issue for social equity applicants, as well as many other communities. So the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation just came out with an additional policy document that clarified. Social equity applicants can operate within 1,500 feet of a pre-existing dispensary that had early approval, or that had early approval for the secondary site. For Peoria, that means both of our Trinity facilities, that they could operate within 1,500 feet of one of those additional sites. What it went on to say, because now we have a bunch of new licenses, all trying to find locations at the same time, social equity applicants cannot operate within 1,500 feet of each other. But then some of us asked, well, how will they know? Because they're all trying to get licenses at the exact same time. What locations are they identifying? And who's, is it who's there first? How are we supposed to determine that? What they said was, the department recognized that they could issue licenses to operate within 1,500 feet of each other, so they will still award to each location, because they don't consider either one pre-existing. So even though the statute says, if there's an existing business, an existing cannabis dispensary, who's a social equity applicant, another social equity applicant is not going to be allowed to locate within 1,500 feet of them. But if one were to open, so if one were to open tomorrow, and a month later, that would be considered a pre-existing business, somebody couldn't locate next to them. But if two of them were proposing to operate side by side in the same facility, maybe they know it, maybe they don't know it, the state would issue licenses to both of them, because neither one of them are pre-existing.
Okay. All right. That was a lot to kind of, to take in there. And so I guess my comment to that is, you know, we are still in the genesis of this. I know it appears from a visual standpoint that we're getting bombarded with licenses, but we see that these licenses aren't all, they're not all coming to fruition, and I think we need to just be very careful of what regulations we put in place right now until we watch this thing play out. I think we may see that, and time will tell, maybe it might be better to have these dispensaries in a concentrated area, similar to car dealerships. That might be the best business model for that industry, and it might be the best for our community as well, too. I think, again, time will tell, so I just want us to be very careful of what guardrails we're looking to put around this industry that is still just so new to us. When it, just kind of answering your questions from your slide, I'm very indifferent about the onsite consumption. And the reason why is, is because we have a product here that is legal to consume, legal for you to purchase, but property owners have the ability, who own homes and apartments, to say, no, you cannot consume this product inside of this residence. And so what you're having is, you're having consumers having to find other places to do it, and then that's when you start getting the complaints of public, you know, smoking in public, or consuming in public. So I'm not sold on the idea of onsite consumption, but my mind is opened up to it, just for the simple fact of, you're able to legally purchase this project, this product, excuse me, but then you're still having to find backdoor alleys or whatever to figure out how to consume it, and I think that that is something that we need to consider. And then as far as a point of clarification, based off of the new redistricting, we only have one site approved in District Four, and that's the Applebee's site. So the Brandywine location in Trinity, both on University and Glen, is located in District Two, which is second to none. So I just wanted to put that out there for clarification, because I know that we have the one that's coming for site approval in District Four, and shops at Grand Prairie. So just for the constituents that are listening, we only have one that is approved in District Four. Just kind of looking at my notes real fast, but yeah, that's all I have right now, though. Again, just, I guess, kind of just wrapping this up. You know, we really need to consider treating this how we do all other industries, because although there's still a stigma when it comes to marijuana, things have evolved, and so we need to be, you know, just be aware of that. And when we talk about possibly regulation, you know, and I'm not picking on any particular business, but I've had constituents ask me, why are all these smoke shops popping up? Why are all these vape shops popping up? When you talk to educators, they're not complaining about kids smoking weed anymore. They're complaining about kids getting their hands on the vapes. You know, things have evolved over time, and so I think we just need to be very careful about what industries we decide to regulate based off of possible, our morals or our values, based off of what this was, you know, 20, 30 years ago. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. There's a lot of interest in this discussion, and we have a lot more people that want to, council members that want to contribute to the discussion, so I'm going to ask that we continue the discussion until 6:15 tonight, so as not to interrupt or lose the momentum here. Councilmember Grab, Second District.
Well, I wonder if our lawmakers in Springfield would consider appropriating monies that would directly correlate with the number of dispensaries that are allowed in any given part of our state to help combat lung cancer, or psychiatric issues that affect, behavioral issues that affect our youngsters, not to mention our adults. Nobody seems to want to talk about that. And for years, of course, there was no discussion about the harmful impact of tobacco. Wrapped our arms around this, and we think this is the second coming of peanut butter. And it is not. And I'm saying, 20 years from now, maybe less, we'll look back on all of this and realize how wrong it was. I hear where we have a disparate impact of cancer in many of our minority communities. Females, for example, in our minority communities who get cancer, their result of their treatment is less likely to be successful. It's been well-reported, it's an empirical fact, and yet here we go. We just can't approve enough of these. That is why I had absolutely no heartburn tightening the circle around the number of these things that we're going to allow in our city. And that's why Councilman Seer's recommendation for direction for future legislation, since this is a policy session, hit a respondent cord with me. And that is why, at the last meeting, I am predictable, perfectly predictable, I suggested at some point, we take a look at a moratorium on any more of these in our city of Peoria, because that's what we can control. This is Peoria City Council. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Madam Mayor.
Just a moment. We've got, who is that? Councilman Velpula? Okay, I've got a couple people ahead of you, and I'll circle back to you, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few points. The, if I understand Corporation Council, what was said, this is regarding something that Councilwoman Jensen brought up. The state licensing requirements, one of the requirements is that they've, this potential licensee already has local approval. Is that correct?
For non-social equity applicants, you have to have your site identified and zoning confirmed that they're proposing a location where the business can operate, correct?
Okay. So, we can't require that they have a state license before they begin the process?
I would be hesitant to make that recommendation, because it would or could impair all the new social equity applicant licenses that were just issued from siding.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, I think you said that the county's tax rate has just increased a little. Mr. Manager?
I believe the county's cannabis tax rate is actually slightly higher. They, the counties were allowed to have one tax rate, I think there's this 3.75.
Instead of three?
Correct.
That was something new, or that's been around since the beginning?
I think counties were allowed to have a rate higher than municipalities from the beginning.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Sears, I'd be interested in your rationale, which I perhaps wasn't paying close attention to, on why special use in an industrial area. I don't have strong feelings either way, but I don't, I'd like you to expound on that a little bit. Also, you know, I, marijuana was around when I was young. I imbibed a little, but not much. But I think that the goal was always to get high, that is impaired. And I, I wonder about onsite consumption. If we, if we have a place for onsite consumption, and people take advantage of that, then they hop in their car, this doesn't sound like a very good formula, as far as I'm concerned. I may be out of it. I'm a little older than I used to be. But that, that concerns me. I don't, I don't understand the rationale for that. If, if the idea is to get high. So, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, if I may? Councilwoman Kelly, let me correct myself. The city manager has corrected me that the county adopted a 3% cannabis retailers occupation tax. Counties were actually allowed to have a tax that was up to 3.7, 0.5 in unincorporated areas of the county, and then 3% in the municipalities. But they are at 3, according to the city manager.
Thank you, Council. Councilmember Rockrigo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And a lot of good questions today, and actually, I've been able to sort of draw lines through a lot of my questions that I had up to this point. But two questions remain, I think. One is for the city manager. And it kind of goes back to, you know, one of the selling points of this, I think, down in Springfield, was dollars that would be returned to communities that needed that, those dollars to come back that had been disadvantaged through the, through this product being illegal. But I've never seen a relationship, so I just want to make for sure that there isn't one that I somehow missed. If we limit the number, we're not, I guess, punished in a way, the dollars from the state still can come to the communities that might have grants or things that come forward. Is that correct?
I don't think that there's any restriction on those dollars. That's the R3 program that the state has. I don't think there's any restriction on that if your community has made a decision to restrict the number of establishments in your community or not, so.
There's no percentage of, you have to create this much percentage or have this many outlets to be able to have, and some of them are organizations that are in our area, some are different, different groups that might apply, but all of those would be safe no matter what we do here to, I think, in the future.
I'd want to confirm that, but I don't believe I've, I haven't seen anything in the regs that would, that would say that that's restricted, but we can certainly look at that and report back.
Because I think that some of those programs that have come forward have been, you know, great programs. We want to make for sure that access is there. And I just, myself, have never seen that, and I can't imagine that that would be sort of part of the situation where if you have so many, or if you allow, then, okay. My next question is, and I guess this is just on the, on the site usage. If you decide to use onsite, and I don't know how this works. So you go, you buy, you're in a locked area, and you have more than you need for the night or that event. But yet, you've got a, in the, in the laws that came out of Springfield, it has to be in a sealed container original from the purchaser to be able to be legally transported from the dispensary to home. How does that work? Or how does that, how does that operate? And I guess that may be a future question to be answered if we ever do consider that, and I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't. But I guess, do you have an answer for how that gets transported?
I can help explain the answer when they are using it at a dispensary or a craft grower or something similar to a tasting room. The product would then, after usage, leave very similar to Illinois's, you know, Merlot to Go law, that the facility is responsible for putting the tamper-proof seal on your wine if you take it from a restaurant. They, the facility would be responsible for trans, putting it in the right container for them to take it in the car. I, I don't have a good answer for you on how that is supposed to work when they are at a cannabis consumption lounge, and they obviously have to open the container or the package for usage. And then if there is some left, legally, I think the answer would be, they couldn't take that with them.
Okay. And then, I would just echo support for the direction that was given by Councilmember Sears. You know, I think, actually, to even streamline our regulations, and I think it's, it's simpler for everybody, the, the more simplified and easy to process and talk about. And by being able to have, have the industrial areas come through the same sort of setup. Because it seems like beforehand we're saying, okay, well, it's okay if it goes there. And I think it probably is easier for our full community if we have the same sort of dialogue across, across the thing. Because I've also heard from some of our industrial neighbors, who, even though they haven't seen them pop up in there, they may have questions or concerns that get addressed during the special use process, but wouldn't in their, in their situation. So I would support his direction on that by making it uniform. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, thank you Corporation Council for the presentation. I'll wait, I am participating virtually. I, I got a couple of clarification questions. The first one is regarding the licensing part. So, as I read, you know, the, the people are the, the patrons should buy, should get a license from State of Illinois Liquor and Cannabis Board, right?
Can you repeat the last, can you repeat the, the end question?
So, so apart from the license granted by the State of Illinois Liquor and Cannabis Board, do we have any regulatory authority as, as for the city of Peoria to develop rules and regulations for licensing and oversight? Because right now, we only are worried about the dispensaries. But let's say, going forward, if we have growers or cultivation centers, infusers, so do we have, are we planning to have any regulatory authority on that?
Council?
Thank you, Councilman. It's an excellent question. We do have a licensing ordinance that puts some additional property distance restrictions. So, for example, you can't be within 500 feet of a school or a daycare. And logistically, how that process works, at least for how it worked for the first two dispensaries, were, once they had their state approvals, they went through the special use permit, and once they had both the state permit or the state license and the special use permit, then they submitted their business license application to the city, and we reviewed it to make sure that it complied with those additional minimum distance restrictions. I will say, last week, we had an interesting scenario, we were, where we were mailed an application by a cannabis dispensary that nobody in the city had been working with or dealing with. They did not have a special use permit for the application. They had listed on the application, and we very promptly returned it to them with an explanation of our process.
You had another question, Councilman Diny.
Yeah, I have the second question. Second question is more, more of, you know, going back to those pointers that you provided. So, one of the questions you say, it says that, does the council want to add, no, wait a minute. Does the council want to add or prohibit, or limit recreational cannabis? I just wanted to answer it, I mean, my thoughts. I wanted to put my thoughts and then conclude there. So, one of the things scientifically, you know, apart from all the contraindications, you know, onsite consumption, again, it's a, it's a, it's a discussion point today. So, usage of more cannabis, you know, it, it leads to, you know, violent behavior, because it, its intoxication may negatively impact cognitive abilities and reduce self-control. Historically, there were dispensaries that had, you know, these dispensaries had delitigious effects on the neighborhoods, which could lead to increased crime. On one side, we have an agenda item that we are trying to, you know, supplement money towards the violence prevention program. And also, apart from the fact that we know having these, having more of these facilities may lead to crime, I mean, I was just reading a recent article in the Journal of Criminal Justice. So, it, it says, it says there, that these cannabis or the recreational cannabis could lead to increased crime. So, so I, I actually, you know, wanted to, you know, you know, to give back on what Councilman Grab said, I would, I would actually like to know what the council thinks about having a temporary ban or a cap. Doesn't matter how, what the number is, but are we, you know, I just wanted to know if we are in favor of capping the, the recreational cannabis? So that's, that's, that's where I end. And then second thing is, you know, I was reading the, the literature that was provided. So we say that it, it, the facilities are, let me go back to my paper or something. Okay. So, in the policy decision regarding the zoning restrictions, so minimum distance limitation of 500 feet to a childcare facility, a religious places, youth recreation and churches, so is 500 feet a gold standard? Corporation Council, I just wanted to learn about this as well. Because if you are saying reasonable zoning restrictions, and you say limitation of 500 feet, so is 500 feet a gold standard? Because I read in a couple of articles that the cities in Washington and Oregon have 1,000 feet distance from schools, religious places and youth recreational centers. So I'm just, you know, wanting to learn whether it is a standard process.
Thank you, Councilman. I think I can provide some information on both of those. You certainly have the authority to institute a moratorium, whether that's temporary or permanent. Now, from a procedural and timing perspective, I, you do want to keep in mind that the majority of the social equity applicants that were listed, seven of those being in our BLS region, were issued at the end of July or early August of this year. Those applicants will have 180 days to identify their location and be up and running. So if that moratorium or ban were to last longer than that time period, that could, in effect, prohibit any of them from siding inside the city of Peoria. Simply from a timing perspective, you will want to keep that in mind. As to the 500 feet, we landed on 500 feet because we made that consistent with what the rules and regulations were for our liquor code. That could certainly be increased if you wanted to provide some additional limitation, either between those sensitive areas, or if you did want to adopt some type of restriction that would prohibit the facilities themselves from locating within so many feet of each other, you could do that. Although I think I've explained sort of the difficulty we may have with the state issuing social equity applicants as, social equity applicants sort of all in one tranche, this, this last group of licenses.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Councilman. Just a final comment, expressions from me. You know, we are all, we all have our opinions as it related, as it relates to cannabis and this regulation and the Tax Act. And we also listen to our, our residents, our constituents, and we're getting feedback, pro and con, right, as it relates to this. But I'm just wondering if we might find a vehicle for getting broad level input from the residents of the city of Peoria as it relates to whether we should limit recreational cannabis, their feelings on onsite consumption, additional zoning or distance limitations, and social equity applicants. And I'm reminded of the survey that we did for rail. We contracted with a company called Images that had an electronic survey that went out and asked 10 questions of residents of really the region and broader. And it got feedback on, on, you know, that particular topic. It was, in that case, it was passenger rail. But I'm wondering if we might do something similar as it relates to some of these questions and work with Images to get a electronic survey out there. So we're driven by data, we're driven by input from our constituents as it relates to this issue of cannabis. Any thoughts? Councilman Rigenbach?
I think getting input from our constituents is always a good idea. My one red flag that came to me is how do we ensure that it's Peoria residents responding? So, I, I don't know how you did that with passenger rail. That was more of a broader community thing, so.
We asked zip codes, or we could...
Right.
Yeah. Have to be an honor system, I think. That's a good question.
That would be something I would want to make sure we quantify also.
Sure. Councilmember Jackson?
Madam Mayor?
Just, just a second, I'll get to you. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your comment about the idea of a public hearing. I, and I have similar concerns that my colleague, Mr. Rigenbach, brought up as to the authenticity of such surveys or, that we would get during a public hearing. I, I get the fact that this is now part of our, what we, we have in our communities around the country. But I must say, I cannot help from going back to thinking about long-term effects of things like drinking, smoking. And personally, I'm somewhat protective, because I've seen some, much of the residual effects of alcohol, drinking, drugs, and the, and I have to speak from that perspective. So, I am very open to gathering the information and looking at it, but I, I am somewhat very concerned about the long-term impacts this could have on our community. And I feel just like, as with liquor stores, payday loan companies, I don't want a bunch of those in my community because of the long-term residual effects that we have seen and the impact on poor communities, minorities and others. And I'm just very, very concerned about that in the long run.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think your idea of getting some public input is good. I question whether a survey is the right way to do it. Perhaps we schedule public meetings. I believe we had some years ago when this first, when we first knew that this was going to be made legal, so I would support that. The other thing, though, I am definitely in favor of putting some limitations. I don't want the city, I've said this over and over again, to be saturated. I'm not against these dispensaries or cannabis businesses, but I don't want us to have too many, and I also don't think we should have too many in one district or one neighborhood. I think it's dangerous. I don't want to have it be, you know, a concentration of dispensaries in one part of the city like we have a concentration of payday loan places on Knoxville. I don't think that's healthy and that's good for the city. So that's where I'm at now, and that's the direction I would give. I think we probably need to have further, another policy session and some further discussions. Of course, staff has enough direction of what to come back with, but I am concerned about having too many in the city and especially in one neighborhood or one district. So that's where I'm coming from right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. Councilmember Allen, you want to wrap us up with your comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we're in overtime right now, so I'm going to go ahead and yield my comments because I know that there's going to be some future discussion on this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good discussion. For those tuning, just now tuning in, we're wrapping up a policy discussion on cannabis regulation and Tax Act. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the discussion. Move by Councilmember Graves, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. So, Member Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the City Council.
And the topic relates to the policy session on cannabis regulation and Tax Act. Do we have any members of the audience that want to address that? Okay. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we are adjournment of the policy session.
Move by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Need some help here. Paul? Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Push your button. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. We are going to break for 10 minutes and come back and start our regular council meeting. Thank you. Go ahead and stop it.
The meeting's...
The meeting's, yeah.
I know.
Very dumb. We saw the...
I know.
But you're so... I think we should move. Oh, yes. Check out. We have to move. Oh, wonderful. So he's down to here. Oh, that's great. Oh, that's wonderful.
Are you sure? I was talking. I was...
Yes. To children.
Oh, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Oh, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff.
How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
Wow, hi, Jeff. How are you doing?
Good.
We're gonna start in about one minute. This is a one-minute warning.
Councilmember Valpula? Councilmember Jensen?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Valpula?
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
They're both there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience with us. We just wrapped up a policy session on cannabis regulation, but we're ready to get started with our regular city council meeting. It is about 6:30 almost PM on Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching on cable channel 22. A notice was received by a member of the city council in accordance with rules established in ordinance number 16,142. This is actually two members, and the members will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the members' electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the members to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting members present. Those members requesting electronic attendance are councilmembers Beth Jensen and councilmembers, councilmember Karen Valpula. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Rigenbach. Councilmember Rockregal. And Councilmember Valpula. We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd also like to welcome our new Corporation Counsel, Mr. Patrick Hayes to Peoria and to the horseshoe. Welcome, Mr. Hayes. We are pleased to have you here. Do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome.
As some of you know, I was born and raised in Peoria, Illinois. I had to work on nearly an entire career to gain enough credibility for the city manager to place this trust and confidence in me to be the Corporation Counsel. I'm very pleased with the staff that's already on hand. They're excellent, as you all well know, and so I'm grateful to them for welcoming me the way that they have and for the generous and warm welcome I've received from all of you at the council today. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the opportunity. I'll do my best to do well for the citizens of the city of Peoria and all of you. Thank you very much.
We're happy to have you. I'd also like to take this time to thank Ms. Chrissy Kapasta. She's been our Corporation Counsel on an interim basis for probably almost three years. And, you know, she's been at almost every council meeting and provided legal leadership for the city of Peoria. So thank you for your leadership for the past three years. And she's not going anywhere, so she's still with us. Thank you. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, you want to get us started?
We are at the Proclamations.
We have one proclamation to recognize Citizens Leadership Academy graduates. Those who are here, would you come up front, please? These faces look familiar. Whereas the city of Peoria is committed to partnering with other local units of government to best serve our community, and whereas the city of Peoria has again partnered with Peoria County to offer a combined Peoria-City-County Citizens Leadership Academy, and whereas Citizens Leadership Academy is a community education course that raises awareness of the responsibilities of local government and the services we offer, whereas Citizens Leadership Academy allows participants an opportunity to experience local government in a unique, hands-on environment through a series of two-hour sessions, and whereas many elected and appointed officials have given of their time to present the sessions to interested and involved citizens, whereas participants had an in-depth look at local government facilities, including the Police Department, Emergency Communications Center, Public Works, City Hall, Courthouse, Jail, Coroner's Office, Animal Shelter, Election Commission, and the Health Department. Now, therefore, I, Reed Ali, Mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Peoria-City-County Citizens Leadership Academy in Peoria, Illinois. Is Gretchen going to speak, or who's going to speak on behalf?
Hi, how's it going? My name is Nick Rubleid. I'm the Communications Coordinator for Peoria County. I actually work in Gretchen's office. I'm directly underneath her there. Thank you, Mayor Ali, and thank you to the entire council. We really appreciate you having us here tonight. As well as, we'd like to thank all of the city functions that participated in this program, City Works, the Police Department, you name them yourself. So thank you very much for participating in this. CLA is actually a little over 10 years old at this point, and the reason I know that is because I found files in my desk from 2009. So we know that much. But it's a great program. It's been going on for a while to give governmental departments the opportunity to educate the public on their function with each other, their function in our everyday lives as citizens of Peoria and Peoria County. And overall, just a great way for the public to meet those officials and be able to see what happens every day, both inside and outside. We look forward to hosting it many more times throughout the next couple of years. If I may, I'd like to actually introduce some of the people who came here tonight. I'd like to introduce some of the people here tonight. From your left or right, Scott Corsart. That's Gretchen Amick. This is Sharon Landis here. Camille Coats. This is Kendall Rushell. That's Johnny Jordan. And Ree Muehlbauer behind me. So they're very excited to be here. There were a couple of people who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, but they're just as grateful and thankful to all of you as well, and I can assure you of that. So thank you again, and thank you. Just, thank you.
Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
We are at the minutes.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 27th, 2022, as printed.
Is there a second? It by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have one town item. 22-334 is a request from the town officials to approve the September 2022 actual expenditures and to approve the October 2022 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Councilmember Jackson?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a motion that item number 223334 be approved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the Consent Agenda. 22-335 is a communication from the mayor and Corporation Counsel with a request to approve the Declaration of Local State of Emergency. 22-336 is a communication from the city manager and director of Public Works with a request to approve the purchase of the properties located at 4300 Southwest Adams Street and 4206 Southwest Adams Street, Peoria, Illinois, in the amount of $76,000 for the Southern Gateway Corridor Improvement Project. 22-337 is a communication with a request to approve a contract with Rock Valley Health to conduct annual physicals for all commissioned firefighting personnel for three years in the amount of $84,105 per year. 22-338 is a communication with a request to receive and file the month-ended August 31, 2022, unaudited financial report. And 22-339 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Transportation Commission with a request to concur of NADA-NFAKA. Term expires June 30th of 2025, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 22-335, please.
Any other items? Can I get a motion to approve consent? Councilman Rigenbach, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-335 is a communication from the mayor and Corporation Counsel with a request to approve the Declaration of Local State of Emergency.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I'd just like to get an update. I mean, President Biden says the emergency was over. Can you give us an update, please, as to why we're still have to have this approved? Thank you.
So on the council communication, if you look at item number two, probably the biggest reason for us right now that we continue with the state of emergency, other what, and, you know, I think that we're still following the CDC guidelines regardless of what President Biden said, that we're following the number of cases that we have. But number two talks about the temporary procedures for public boards and commissions, that they can operate remotely and in accordance with the Open Meeting Act. By doing that, that's probably the most salient reason right now, as long as the governor is continuing to extend that type of emergency declaration. That allows our boards and commissions to meet remotely, and that allows that work to still be conducted.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve, move to approve, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Rockregal. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Valpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at Presentations. 22-340 is a communication from the city manager and Deputy Corporation Counsel with a request to receive and file a presentation on the Safety Act.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska here to talk with the second presentation of the evening, but I didn't know if Councilman Grab might want to say a few words. He made the request to have this, for this presentation be made, so I just wanted to see if Councilman Grab might want to say a few words first.
Councilman Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm gonna be predictable and repeat what I've said before, but I think it's important. When we come here, we should dispense with the D for Democrat hat and R for Republican hat. We should be doing what's best for our people. We have law enforcement agencies and/or state's attorneys in all 102 counties that continue to have grave reservations about the implementation of the Safety Act as it is currently written. Now, we have been told that there's going to be even further changes. These are going to have to be made, in my opinion, on or before the 1st of January of '23 to have maximal impact. Otherwise, we'll be rolling out a law that is imperfect and not ready for prime time. Nothing should be done or allowed to be done in this state that would further imperil our brave men and women in blue who are out there every single day trying to stop this god-awful gunfire and the god-awful situation we have with many of our young people killing each other and all these funerals we've been having. Nothing, nothing should prevent or stand in our way of curbing the horrible crime that's occurring in this community and the acts of juvenile delinquency. Nothing. And so that's why it's so important, in my opinion, that our body here be made aware of what is happening with this law, because it's gonna affect every man, woman, and child in this state. It's gonna affect every man, woman, and child in the city of Peoria. And guess what? We're seating, we are seated in seats of power, if you will, municipal power. And if this thing rolls out and makes Peoria even more incredibly challenged than it is now in terms of our law enforcement, we are gonna have a lot to answer for. So I'm gonna ask for these periodic updates, Manager. Do you see any problem as we have developments with this? I'm not saying slavishly has to be every one or two weeks or whatever, but please keep us posted, because this is so important for all of us.
We certainly can do that and have no problem in, as developments exist. I think even between the production of this presentation, we've had several developments that occurred that Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska can talk about. But yes, we can certainly keep the council abreast of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. It's an evolving legislation. Council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2021, the state of Illinois adopted the Safety Act, which is short for the Safety, Accountability, Fairness, and Equity Today Act. It was a really broad bill that included criminal justice reform on multiple subjects, including cash bail, police training and certification, reporting requirements, use of force, detainee rights, and officer misconduct, among other things. It set up three implementation dates, starting in 2021 and ending in 2023. So effective July 1st, 2021, anonymous complaints against police officers were no longer allowed. So officers were not required to be informed of the name of the complainant who made a complaint against them. In addition, it eliminated the requirement that there was a sworn affidavit that included, or that accompanied that complaint. It gave officers a duty to render medical aid, so officers have a duty to render medical aid, whether or not that aid was required as a result of use of force. There's a duty to intervene for unauthorized use of force. No knock warrants, only if body-worn cameras are in use, although there are some additional steps if a child or a vulnerable person would be in that location. Body-worn cameras are now required for all police departments. That is a requirement that, based on your population, will be in place for everyone. Even the smallest municipalities will have to comply with that in 2025. It also included some annual reporting, some restrictions on when officers could view body-worn cameras when they're writing reports. There are some additional reporting requirements to the Illinois State Police and the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. We have reports that have to go to the state police on a monthly basis if it involves mental health and use of force. We have reports that have to go to the Illinois Criminal Justice Authority within 30 days if someone passes away as a result of our police department's use of force. We have to retain police misconduct records permanently, and then training. We are now required to offer mental health screenings for our officers, and they are required to have substantial amount of crisis intervention training when dealing with members or of the public who have some mental illness. In 2022, the law that went into effect involved police certification every three years through the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, as well as some reporting requirements if they engage in conduct that is eligible for decertification. And if you look in Section 6.1 of the Illinois Police Training Act, there's an entire list of offenses that would be considered decertifiable conduct. Three of those, just as an example, would be aggravated assault, theft, and criminal sexual abuse. What we've seen in the news lately are really the requirements that are going to go into effect January 1 of 2023. One involves law enforcement misconduct, that again, anonymous complaints, which are now allowed, can be filed with the proper board on any official misconduct an officer has committed, and the board can investigate and initiate a decertification process. Monetary bail will be abolished January 1, 2023. And I do want to point out the difference between the state system and the federal system. On a federal level, bail is generally not gonna be required. It's very rare. It is much more common for state offenses. It's abolished for certain offenses and conditions, it gives certain conditions upon which pre-trial release may be granted or denied. The judge now has the authority to determine release without an appearance, and criminal defendants can be released on personal recognizance if defendants attend all their required court proceedings. They do not reoffend or commit criminal offenses. Additional conditions may be imposed if it will assure the defendant's appearance in court. So a person arrested, and with this presentation, we provided some excellent flow charts from the Illinois courts that will help really walk you through the decision-making process. So for persons arrested, they can now be issued citations in lieu of arrest. So for persons arrested, they can now be issued citations in lieu of arrest if they can show proper identification for traffic in Class B and C criminal misdemeanor offenses who pose no obvious threat to the community or have obvious medical or mental health issues. They will have to appear within twenty-one days. A person cannot be arrested for obstructing a peace officer unless there is an underlying offense. There are lots of legal questions that are raised by those. For example, there are also traffic offenses that are a Class A misdemeanor. So if you had something like reckless driving, is it to be considered a traffic offense, or is it to be considered a Class A misdemeanor? Another provision of the act involves pretrial release. There's also an excellent flow chart on this that can help really outline what the process should be. All persons charged with an offense shall be eligible for pretrial release before conviction, and it can only be denied when a person is charged with a detainable felony. Section six point one of the act is very clear about denial of bail and non-probational, non-provationable felonies. And those would be things that are listed in the act that are non-provational felonies. They do not present a real and present danger, and they do not present a safety or threat to others. So is there a lot of questions that have yet to be answered by the bill? I think those that are proponents of the bill and those that are opponents of the bill have agreed there's language that needs to be worked out. We know that in veto session, that there's already one bill that has been proposed. Senate Bill forty-two twenty-eight was filed in September. We also know that other agencies, everyone from the state's attorneys to the Chiefs of Police Association, to multiple legal agencies, are all working on some language proposals that I, we suspect we will see some additional amendments to either Senate Bill forty-two twenty-eight or some standalone bills. What we know Senate Bill forty-two twenty-eight, at least as of today, says is it would amend the act to allow arrest for all felonies and Class A misdemeanors. And for the listening audience, a felony would be something like murder, armed robbery, aggravated kidnapping, or aggravated arson. And a Class A misdemeanor is generally something along the lines of a DUI, battery, driving on a suspended license, or fact. Arrest would be allowed when the officer reasonably believes an individual poses a threat to the community, when the officer reasonably believes arrest is necessary to discontinue criminal behavior. This bill would also remove the requirement that a person released on the citation is to be scheduled in court within twenty-one days. We also know that the bill currently clarifies that the abolition of bail applies to offenses that are committed on or after January first, two thousand and twenty-three, that the pretrial release presumption would not apply if the life sentence could potentially, if the life sentence could potentially be imposed. And pretrial release conditions could include, could include the protection of community and protection of witnesses and jurors. Other provisions in the bill, the courts do not have to explain why less restrictive conditions are ineffective when detaining defendants. It eases the requirements for issuing warrants after a failure to appear, and it allows the courts to consider whether defendants obstructed criminal justice processes. Finally, it would add a section denying pretrial release if charged with a crime where the court believes there's a risk that the defendant will not appear, that the defendant will pose a danger to any other person, or that the defendant will threaten a prospective witness or jurors. Again, this is the proposed, or this is Senate Bill forty-two twenty-eight, which proposes to make changes to the existing Safety Act. Currently, there are lawsuits pending by the state's attorneys in Will, Grundy, Kankakee, Vermillion, McHenry, Brown, and Joe Davies and McHenry Counties. I may have missed a couple in there today as well. The lawsuits claim that no cash, that the no cash bail provision violates the single-subject law of the Illinois Constitution, and it also claims that the act violates the Separation of Powers Clause of the Illinois Constitution. So even if the legislature were to take no action on Senate Bill forty-two twenty-eight, all of these lawsuits request a stay or an injunction until further language could be worked out. So those are the facts as we know them to date. With that, I can answer perhaps a few questions about the bill, but a lot of this is still yet to be determined.
And we did invite Leader Gordon Booth, as well as State's Attorney Jody Hous, and they are going to make themselves available following the veto session in December and come to council during that time. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska, for your presentation today. I do want to thank Councilman Gray for bringing this forward. I think it's important that we cut through the fog, because there's a lot of fog right now surrounding this bill, especially given the current political climate within our state. So I think it's very important that the constituents listening realize that this is a very fluid situation, a very involving situation. Be careful what you read online. Be careful what you read on the Book of Faces. Make sure that you are using credible sources, just to make sure that you know the facts and we're not creating unwarranted hysteria. So I look forward to future conversations and bringing in various subject matter experts to make sure that the constituents have the information that they need. But I would also, and not to put him on the hot seat, but he's a cool guy, so I know he doesn't sweat much, but can we give the privilege of the floor to Chief Edgafaria, just to maybe provide his opinion, or maybe just, you know, how are you currently feeling right now based off of the act as it's currently presented?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yeah, as it sits currently, there are things in the Safety Act that we all agree with, obviously, right? Body-worn cameras, et cetera. We need them. But as you said, this is a very fluid situation with what's going on now in the Safety Act. There's a lot of unanswered questions. There are a lot of meetings that we've been in, that we've been involved in as the Peoria Police Department, with the state's attorney, other sheriffs, other state's attorneys from around the state. There's the advocate sides for the Safety Act that sit there, along with the state's attorney, the sheriffs, and the chiefs. And there is still a lot of dialogue. I think what we'll see is going to see some trailer bills in the near future. This will be pushed off, is what I believe is going to happen. So we are playing it day by day, and we know that it's January first that this is supposed to go into effect. I don't think it will, just based on conversations that I've been involved in and things that we've seen. But obviously, the big thing is the pretrial release and the bail reform is one of the bigger highlights, that there's many discussions on both sides of the aisle on it. So until we can, until the legislators and everybody can get this together, this is just day by day. And we'll keep, we'll keep doing our job the way we've been doing it. And if something changes, or they enact something, we will follow it.
Thank you, Chief. If you would stay put just in case there's another question or two coming your way. Councilmember Gray?
Chief, on the portion of the presentation that said effective January one of, oh, gosh, it should have said twenty-three, right? Twenty twenty-three. I think it's wrong on our handout, Mr. Manager, when we talk about police certification every three years. Manager, you're right.
I think that Christie, or Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapuska is backing up to that. And I think that went into effect one-one of twenty-two, correct, the certification piece?
I believe it was actually July first of two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Chief, on this police certification, now, we're one of the few, relatively few police departments in the entire country that's professionally accredited through Kalia.
Correct.
Are there certification requirements by virtue of the fact that we're one of the professionally accredited police agencies, one of the few, I think, part of only three percent of all the departments nationwide? Are there any certification procedures that we go through that would initiate the need for us to fall under this requirement for already doing it?
Yeah, we would already be following it, right, through Kalia, because it's part of the requirement to be certified.
And that means continuing education for our officers and keeping them on the cutting edge as well. I think operationally, you and I have also discussed some of the problems as to what happens if you make an arrest of somebody one in the morning, and a judge has to make a decision. Operationally, you and I have opined about what that means, if there's going to be like a doctor on call or a judge on call. Twenty-four, there are many operational issues that have to be settled as well. Have you received any direction on that?
We've not received any guidance on any of that at this point. Again, there's a lot of discussions on these topics. We're just waiting for the guidance, just like every other agency in the state.
Okay. Well, I don't want to belabor it, Mayor. I thank you very much.
Councilmember Seer?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I just want to make a quick comment about our budget. Where usually, the five years I've been here, every time we have difficulties with the budget, first thing to be cut is always certification and training. So, no, no, I don't know how this is going to work in a future budget, but just something for you to keep in mind, because you're in charge of your budget, obviously. Hopefully, the certification training won't be cut if possible. Number two, accountability is a big word for me. And this bill, so far, it was written in a time of unrest, where a lot of people were upset. It seems to me like there's, we're giving less and less accountability to our criminal. So I'm very concerned about that for this bill. I mean, a lot of the cuts are really less accountability. And I say that because here, in the city of Peoria, we get reports. All of us get report daily on the crimes that are being committed. My question to you is this: How is this bill going to change the criminal action of these minors, especially minors, but I'm being told the most crimes that come here are committed by kids from age thirteen to twenty-six, eighty-five percent, thirteen to twenty-six? What does this law change, especially for the kids that are thirteen to seventeen?
Quite frankly, it doesn't change how we're procedurally going to do our job. We are going to continue to follow the law. We're going to continue to make the arrests that we need to make. I think most of what you're seeing is what's going to fall on the state's attorney's office and those attorneys. And I would rather let them answer how that's going to affect them and how they will issue bonds or no bonds to somebody that's committed a crime. We will continue to do what we do as a policing agency, and we will continue to make the arrests that we need to make, issue the citations, we will continue to do. I think the ball now goes into the court of what's the court going to do.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. And I think it's our early December meeting where we'll actually have the state's attorney present here and ready to answer some questions. Hopefully, by then, we'll have some new trailer bills and some new legislation.
Hopefully, there's some clarity by then. I think we will have something.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
There's no more questions or comments. Can I get a motion to receive and file moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel? Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Before we go to the next item, I will be remiss if I did not acknowledge our Cub Scouts who are in the audience with us. Cub Scouts from Charter Oak, would you please stand up and be recognized? Thank you, guys, for your service. And if you would just say your names for us, you can, you can just kind of shout it out. Thank you for what you're doing and what you're going to do in the future for your community. Thanks, guys. Madam Clerk?
We are at our second presentation. Twenty-two dash three four one is a communication from the City Manager and Public Works Director with a request to receive and file a presentation on snow removal operations.
Do you believe we're talking about snow? Okay. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. We have with us our Deputy Public Works Director, Cy Maroon, who's going to walk through the presentation. It is that time of year, again, where we need to have the snow presentation. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Director Maroon.
Thank you, City Manager. Thanks for, once again, on behalf of Public Works, we're just always happy to be here to do this presentation. We do it annually. And I want to thank Madam Mayor and the council manager and staff, and all the citizens that are actually listening to us tonight. So we appreciate that. So I am going to cover the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three season snow removal plan this evening. And this is our winter season staffing. We're going right into the staffing levels, because what I wanted to do right up front with this presentation is thank the council, thank the manager, and all those that have took part in allowing us to go back from forty-seven total employees, and that's temporary and full-time, to fifty-six. And what that's done now, so we've increased the number to fifty-six this year, this season, and it's allowing us now to go to the current year of twenty-one, which we'll be going into this year, this season, twenty-one snow routes, up from seventeen snow routes the last two seasons. Want to thank you for that. That's a big adjustment for us on the positive side. What that does is allows us the designated hill routes back to four instead of two. Our tanna plow routes have remained at eight. And then with the numbers of routes at twenty-one and the additional staff, it's allowing us to run the twenty-four-hour, round-the-clock operation, the two twelve-hour shifts. Once we have two inches or more predicted, then we will go into that mode of the twelve-hour shifts. So with that additional staff, it's actually, what it's doing for us is it's reducing the number of average miles per route. So we, as you see, we have one hundred and sixty-one primary routes, the main arterials, the high-traffic-volume routes that we go on to, we go into that immediately, covering all arterial routes until the snow stops. Once the snow stops and the streets are in good enough condition that we can pull off of them, at that point, we go into the residential streets with two or more inches of snow. So, and then with the residential streets, of course, there's three hundred and thirty-two miles of residential streets. There's one hundred and sixty-one miles of main arterials. Now, that is centerline miles, okay? Just want to make that clear. Centerline miles is just going one direction. So you can multiply that by the number of lanes that we deal with. There's some two lanes, there's some three lanes, there's some four lanes. Actually, there's five lanes if you count the center turn lane on a lot of the streets, right? So what it's done for us then is it's reduced the snow routes down to about seven and a half to eight miles on average per route with twenty-one routes this year. That's down from about nine and a half to ten miles of average routes when we were at seventeen. So the increase may not sound like a lot, but you multiply that by two, three, or four, and now the number increases quite a bit. You could legitimately say that at times, we're plowing twelve-hundred snow miles, or center, not centerline, twelve-hundred miles of streets, based off of the going one direction and coming back the other and multiplying that. So anyway, kind of talked about that for a little bit. We have eighty miles of alleyways, okay, within the city of Peoria. We make it a point that once we reach about five to six inches, and they are not totally passable for fire, I'm sorry, for garbage trucks, and for people to get into their garages, that that's maybe their only way into their, into their garage, we will go into the alleys and plow them one direction, the plow straight, so everybody gets a little bit of the snow going off of each side on the windrows. We're not dumping it all on one side or the other. So we're, we're trying to make things so that it's passable and that it's fair and equal to everyone. One of the final things I want to mention about this slide is, the city does not have a bare pavement policy. And what I mean by that, bare pavement policy is for the residential districts, or the residential streets, okay? The bare pavement, we typically will see that in a snowstorm on the main arterials, because we, we stay on those until we can move into the residential streets. The residential streets, by the time we get to them, a lot of times, because of the traffic and people driving on it, it starts to snowpack, or it creates the ice pack, depending on the temperatures. And so we don't have a guarantee of bare pavement on residential streets, okay? As much as we would like to do that, it's just not, it just doesn't work for us with the staffing levels, with the amount of equipment. That would, if we were to do that, that would, that would just increase things, you know, twofold, maybe threefold. So it's just one thing we like to make clear, is that we don't have the bare pavement policy. And, and so the expectation should be that we will get in there and we will plow the streets from curb to curb when we go into residentials, but it will not be to the pavement. from curb to curb when we go into residentials, but it will not be to the pavement. The plow cannot pull ice and cannot pull snow once it's packed. And we're not using, we're not using materials on the residential streets unless we get into an ice situation where we see that. We will then make the adjustment to using some salt and some liquid brine and chloride to try to break that pavement, break that bond to the pavement. So, the timing, the timing has also changed on the amount of time that we will complete the citywide snow route, primary streetwise, okay? So, once there's between two and six inches of snow, we have, we will have the city cleared within twenty-four hours, once it stops snowing, not from the beginning of the storm, but once it stops snowing, then, so going to twenty-one routes, we've been able to reduce that back from thirty-six hours to twenty-four hours. Now, the six inches or more, it's gone, it's come down from forty-eight hours to thirty-six hours. So, our customer service levels are going to increase now back to where we really feel comfortable with and knowing that we can do this for the citizens and the travelers, even those that are visitors that are coming into town. We make it a concerted effort to get that done and so that people can, the school buses, the emergency vehicles. I mean, we're focusing on getting things done for not just us, but for all the people that use the streets. The final thing on this slide is the ABC subroutes that we like to explain. It's a rotational approach to plowing residential streets. So, what this does is, if you take the shaded green part, that's one route. That's Route One in the city of Peoria on the snow plan. What we do for the ABC routes, so that it keeps everything, as I say, equal and fair, is that nobody is ever first and nobody is ever last on the snow route system every time it snows. So, we start the first snow route. So, what we've done here is we've taken that particular snow route that you just saw, that complete shaded green area, and we've divided it into three routes. And we do that on all twenty-one routes. We start with A, B, and C. The very first storm, that's exactly what we're doing. We're going A, B, C. The second storm out, we start with B and go C, A, and then the third storm out, we go C, A, B, meaning that we've done that complete rotation. And each district, even though it's hard for the citizen to understand that or to see that happening, that is what keeps it equal and fair, as I like to say, throughout every storm, so that not one area is concentrated for the first time. And every time out, we do the rotational system. So, parking enforcement is now within the police department. And it pertains to the parking is two or more inches of snow, as the sign says on the right, those are all on primary snow routes, on the marked snow routes. Two or more inches of snow, no parking goes into effect automatically. And it stays into effect for forty-eight hours. And then there are some citations if the cars are not moved, and those citations can be issued every twenty-four hours. Signs are posted on what we call the emergency snow routes, and that's every primary street that we have identified in our snow plan. The bottom snow route says no parking, two inches or more, two or more inches of snow from eleven PM to six AM. That's for the central business district. What we do different here in the central business district is we allow parking during the day, no parking at night from eleven to six. That gives us the opportunity to clean the streets, clear the parking lanes. And with that happening, then there's, people are able to park, whether they work there or they're going to be doing business downtown. So, we do allow parking during the day when, again, when there's two or more inches of snow, which goes against the grain from the primary routed streets. But that is, again, for us to be customer-friendly and allow people to be able to get into businesses and locations in the central business district. The commercial sidewalk city ordinance, it's section twenty-six dash two twenty, two fifty-one. This ordinance pertains to clearing of sidewalks, and it includes all commercial properties. And by that, I mean, we include businesses, schools, churches, and hospitals. Those are the four areas that are targeted for clearing sidewalks. We're not doing it on the residential streets at this time. We don't have an ordinance. But the path needs to be cleared four foot wide, wide enough for a stroller or for a wheelchair. It's cleared within, up to six inches, it's twenty-four hours or less. Six or more inches, the commercial property owners or their staff have up to thirty-six hours to clear the sidewalks. One thing that should be noted is that we are asking that they do not put the snow in the street, block fire hydrants, or mailboxes. Those are all things that will affect somebody in a negative way. So, we want to make sure that that snow is being put in a place where they can, you know, where people can still function on the sidewalks. And again, the noncompliance to that, there's the penalties there, fifteen to a hundred dollars, depending on the length of your sidewalk. So, information and resources, there's a number of locations to get information, there's a number of locations to utilize to be updated on the storm. There's a lot of media outlets, as you can see on there. There's just about everything that you can imagine that we do utilize during snowstorms. If someone just wants a prerecorded message, just to know what our plan is and what we're doing and what's next, the four-nine-four-eight-eight-thirty number is a prerecorded message that we offer for citizens to call in on. They don't have to wait for a live voice. They don't, they don't have to wait. They just go right to the message. And that will allow them to understand basically what information that we put out. Again, lots of avenues for that. Peoria Cares U Report is on there at four-nine-four-two-two-seventy-three. That's another opportunity for people to reach out and request. That may take some time, depending on if it's a weekend or after hours, for us to get that request, but that is another avenue for gathering information. So, contacting Public Works can be done directly. And then we have our main line, which is four-nine-four-eight-eight-hundred. You get a live voice during the working hours. If it's after hours and it's on a weekend or in a significant snowfall, we activate our snow call center, and that number is six-four-nine-four-eight-eight-fifty. Once we activate the snow call center, we have a staff there that's dedicated and designated to just answer those phone calls that are coming in, okay? They're set there as long as the storm is going on until we can break free from that. We keep that phone activated around the clock. And if it happens to be a large snowstorm and if the phones are overwhelmed with callers, if the admin staff is overwhelmed with answering the calls, there's a backup system for voicemail. You leave the voicemail, even if it's a name and a phone number, we're going to get back with you as soon as we retrieve that message. So, we definitely are out there for, you know, for the information. We're definitely there to create that customer service level. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Assistant Director Maroon. Great, great report.
Thank you.
I'm not looking forward to snow, but you have a good plan. Councilman Ruckregel?
Thank you very much, and I'm with you on the snow. This might be the winter, you know? Who knows? First of all, great job and, you know, being able to rebuild the team there and to be able to increase the routes. Wonderful job. I think that is going to resonate throughout the city. Some great accolades there. And thank you for explaining the alley piece, because we get a lot of questions on that. Just a couple of questions might be for you for the city manager. There is a neighboring community that has a consent decree based on a disability case, I believe, on sidewalks and making sure that they are clean so that all of our, all of our citizens can access and be able to get around. We've got a lot more students that are walking to schools, and sidewalks continue to be a big, big piece. How do you intend to be able to get out to our commercial property owners so that they're aware of this? I know this is kind of new conversation we've had for a couple of years, but how will you reach out to them to make for sure?
Deputy Director, you want to take this one and just talk a little bit about what the outreach the department's going to be doing on that front?
Yes. So, the outreach that we utilize is we have postcards that we will send to, we've got a, you know, the list of mailings that we can do that will get out to the property owners prior to the winter to give them that heads up that, you know, this is the time of the year. So, we will utilize those postcards and to get that information out, just to tip them off.
Well, second question is, will there be any situations where you'll pre-treat residential streets?
So, yes, we never rule that out a hundred percent, saying that we will never do that. Because if we're looking at the forecast and we're seeing ice come in, we will then, and the temperatures, of course, you know, the ground temperatures are the key, obviously, that there's a lot of variables that go into that. But if we see that it's going to be an icy situation, we do, we do want to get out ahead of it, get some product down on the streets so that we can hopefully prevent the bonding of the ice or the snow to the pavement.
And is that one of the situations where if it's going to rain before, you know, where rain turns into snow, sometimes pre-treating doesn't help sometimes?
Yeah, so, good question. So, pre-treating with rain is, I want to, you know, for lack of a better term, is useless. Because we could put down the product, and if it rains after we put down the product, all it's doing is washing it off. So, it goes right to the, right to the curb line. So, we're not getting a benefit. And that's the other thing we have to look for. Is there rain in the forecast? Is it before or is it after?
Okay. Well, tell your snow fighters that we're definitely all behind him. And I saw some of the great blades that have been painted. Looking forward to seeing those around the city. And just one more thing is, I'm going to be an advocate again as we're updating our websites and our contacts like that. And I know our public works director is familiar with this, and he knows exactly where I'm going on this. There are a lot of communities that make sure that we are being real-time on our snow removal, where, and a lot of communities will have it even on a TV station, and they can see where there's been a pass or how that those, those routes are being done. So, the people know that somebody's on their way, and they can keep track. And are we fifty percent, seventy-five percent, eight percent? As we're looking at our upgrades to websites and our communication, I would, again, be an advocate for that, because I think that that can take some of the calls that we all get, and we get quite a few of them, about, hey, did they forget me? And we know it's just a matter of time. They're going to be there a little bit, but, you know, you're always good about taking those phone calls and getting back to us, letting us know. But I think that the more communication we can have during these snow events and these ice events would be helpful, and that's one piece. I've also seen them used on road construction as well, but just, I'll be an advocate for that. Thank you.
I think we will definitely look at that as future considerations. We, we've seen that system and we understand how it works. We haven't got there yet, but it definitely does make a difference.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation, Mr. Maroon. My colleague here took one of my questions. I was going to ask about the GPS. I get a lot of requests about that, so people are very impatient. They want to know where our trucks are at. What's, what is the cost to add GPS in all our fleet?
Well, that, that really depends on the system. It depends on the vendor. It depends on how much you're trying to get out of that, that unit. It can, it can be as little as knowing where the trucks are and where they've been, a tracking system that was, that we can identify where we've already been. It can also let you know that the plow is up or the plow is down, the auger is on, the spinner is on or it's off, so whether we're putting product down or not putting product down. So, there's a lot of variables that go into, how much do you want to get, how much do we need, and how much do we want to spend, of course. So, we've had AVL system in the, in the equipment. Previous technology went beyond where we were at at that time. It wasn't feasible for us to buy another system. And so, again, that's another one of the future considerations that we always will take into consideration.
Mr. Manager, would this request qualify for the ARPO many?
Possibly. I'd have to look at it and check the regs.
Last question, I'm going to call on the thousand-feet rule. You didn't cover that. Is that, does that rule still exist when we have two to six or more than six inches, where, like my neighborhood, I called you before, we'll plow the main road, but not all the smaller road? If you're like a thousand feet away from the road that's been plowed, that rule still exists? I didn't hear you cover that.
No, it's, yes. I mean, if it's between two and six inches, we're going to get to the residentials, but the idea is clear the primaries, obviously, first and get them in passable condition before we go into the residential streets. And then, of course, then it depends on, are you on the A route, the B route, or the C route, is whether, how soon you'll see a truck in a specific neighborhood.
Well, a lot of the cul-de-sacs are the last one to be plowed, correct?
Well...
Ash to Main Road.
Again, it may seem like it, but in the ABC system, they're, in the routes out north, yes, they are, I'm not going to say they're the last, but there are a lot of routes. I think we have four-hundred-and-sixty-three cul-de-sacs in the city of Peoria, which most of them are out to the north. But again, A, B, or C, you know, A may have a lot less cul-de-sacs than B or C, which I will tell you that on your Route Twenty-One out there, that is the case. There's a lot of them in that B route. So, it doesn't necessarily, like I say, make anybody first or last every time. It may seem like it, and that's where we run into the issues of complaints. But, and I always throw this out there every year, and I will throw it out again, we are always willing to answer those questions and let someone know where the trucks are and where they've been.
Last question, will you use subcontractors this year?
We will not rule them out depending on the size of the snows, but being that we went to twenty-one routes, we're anticipating that we don't need to go to the subcontractor route.
Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. A quick question, Director. Our policy calls for the snow removal off of sidewalks for businesses and churches, hospitals, and schools, but it doesn't include not-for-profit organizations, yet those are locations where people go for needed services. And so, do you recall the rationale for excluding those not-for-profit organizations?
Honestly, I think we just overlooked that when we were putting the ordinance together several years ago. I don't think it ever, it came into question, but that's a great question and something we probably, going forward, we need to look into.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit that, Manager, because I think that we have a lot, a lot of not-for-profits that are used, and if the sidewalks aren't cleared, we've got people needing services that are...
Well, one of the things I just want to make sure that we look at is, is that considered a commercial entity under the ordinance? And I think that it would be, but I want to make sure that we review that. So, I think they would be covered as a business, as a commercial business.
Yes. It includes businesses, schools, churches, and hospitals. So, I guess if we're going to fall into a category, it would be businesses.
So, maybe it's already covered, is what you're suggesting? So, we can get a clarification on that?
We'll clarify.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Director. Great, great report.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a motion to receive and file moved by Councilmember Ruckreg... Sorry, I haven't done that in a long time. Moved by Councilmember Riggenbach, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Member Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at first readings. Twenty-two dash three four two is a communication from the city manager and corporation council with a request for a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter eighteen licenses, Article Seventeen, Mobile Food Vehicles of the Code of the City of Peoria to eliminate the downtown business district operating locations for mobile food vehicles.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. This is a first reading of this ordinance. I think that Councilwoman Jensen brought this, asked that we bring this forward. In May, we eliminated the fees for twenty-twenty-two for food carts and food trucks downtown. We didn't see anybody that took us up on taking in any of those spots. This would remove the restrictions on where food trucks can operate through the end of this year, so really just for a two-month-plus period of time. And then we can see, we do have some interest from one food truck operator that might want to come in during that period of time, so this would just free up that opportunity to operate. They would still have the distance requirements from restaurants that they would have to abide by that's in the ordinance, but this would, this would free that up. that they would have to abide by that's in the ordinance, but this would free that up. So, that's the rationale for this first reading, and it would just last really for a two-month period of time.
Councilmember Jensen, did you have any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Manager Urick. And Deputy Corporation Counsel Kapustik, I probably said that wrong. I'm so used to Peterson. But thank you for bringing this forward. And I think this is a good start, and I support it. But I would like also, really, my request was sort of twofold or a little bit more. I would like us to revisit the limitations going forward past this year. You know, I'm not certain I don't, that we're going to have many push carts, if any, back. And I don't know if it'll ever be back to what it was when we first put these limitations in place. And again, I think that in order to attract more people downtown and get more people downtown, and the people that are downtown to stay downtown during lunch, would be, have more food trucks, restaurants open, and hopefully, push carts. So, I would like to see us consider doing that as well as approving this ordinance for the rest of this year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a simple question on the revenue side of this. And being in the restaurant business, I know I used to get this about where the transaction is actually made, whether it's made at the door, and this was in the delivery business, or whether it was made where the computer was. But for any of the, our food carts that are operating within, for that operation where the transaction is physically made within the city of Peoria, city sales tax does apply. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that also counts for HRA taxes as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Jensen. I think looking at this more long-term is the direction I would like to see us go. When you talk about trying to just recreate the vibrancy of downtown, I think food trucks is a big component of that moving forward. I think we could talk about what that looks like if we want to do more of a lottery system, and maybe we only allow so many food trucks downtown for a certain period of time. But, you know, we just had a presentation on snow routes, so we know that it's about to get cold here soon. And so, I don't know how many food trucks are going to really be able to take advantage of the next couple months before we head into 2023. So, I think this is a great start in the right direction. But as we think about creating the vibrancy and really bringing our downtown back to what it was, we need to consider what is our long-term strategy when it comes to food trucks downtown. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Agree with the comments that have been made so far. I think that there's a lot of things to take into consideration for our downtown and opportunities, and how to come up with solutions that are good for everybody. So, I would move that we table this until we can have some community stakeholder meetings for the downtown area and come up with solutions that are good for everybody.
I think it's just a receive and file, isn't it?
This is the first reading of the ordinance?
First reading. So, it'll be a receive and file, the first reading.
If I could respond to Councilman Euler, if there isn't anybody else reading?
Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, I don't oppose your idea to have further discussion and include all the, you know, restaurant owners and stakeholders, push cart license holders, and mobile food truck owners, and have a meeting. But I think that that could happen after this current ordinance is passed, since this is only, you know, to end the moratorium for, you know, the rest of the year, like we did with the other licenses due to COVID. So, I don't know if you would consider, rather than tabling moving forward with this ordinance, and then us spearheading a public discussion and study of what we should do for 2023.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Proceed. Councilmember Euler, you want to?
No, I think that's part of the discussion, is that we need to have a discussion with some of those that would be affected with making this decision. And I received a flurry of phone calls, and there were a number of business owners that didn't realize until the last two days that this was coming. And they're incredibly upset that we didn't take the opportunity to even talk to them when they've had their businesses open and fought through COVID and fought through personnel challenges. And I think that we need to get their engagement, because they're trying to keep our downtown alive now with what they're already doing. And that's why I think that we need to take quite a bit more time with this before we try to pass something.
So, your motion is to table?
Correct.
And do you have to table until?
It just goes on the table till we decide to bring it back.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab.
I have a question, a parliamentary question.
I've got some additional people in line. First, Councilwoman Jensen.
Okay.
Councilmember Grab?
I just think there's a wisdom in proceeding in a very deliberate collaborative way. And I think tabling was a responsible thing to do, because while we can say we want food trucks downtown, and we do, we also want to be sure that the people who have the brick-and-mortar operations have a seat at the table to discuss a balanced approach to this. Councilman Ruckregel certainly remembers, and I know Councilwoman Jensen remembers, the terrible war we had downtown with the push cart operators versus the brick-and-mortar people. I think this war raged for at least a year or two under Mayor Grease. And I'm very reluctant to see that kind of thing happen. I received a flurry of calls as well. And we do have restaurants that are trying to establish a foothold downtown. And so, I think we need to use a measured approach. I know that in the past, there's a lot of details that can be crafted. We said that people who already had a restaurant could have a push cart as well. Now, it seems like it's these food trucks. Less push carts, times have changed, and now, food trucks. So, I think the tabling is in order to allow the brick-and-mortar people to have some conversation on this. And it's not to shut out food trucks, but to just have the Confucian mean on this, a reasonable approach that causes no one to feel that they're being handicapped in their ability to grow their business. And that's the main reason I support the tabling. And we should begin some earnest discussions with the restaurant operators as well.
Council Hayes, we got a point of order?
Sure. When the motion to table is made, it's taken up and resolved. And whether, if it's successful, then the matter's tabled. But if not, you can continue the debate. Thank you.
Okay. So, the discussion should be related to the motion? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, Madam. Typically, the only issue on a motion to table is whether it's to a specific time or generally, and not otherwise subject to debate.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Have a motion?
I do have a question related to the motion to table.
You have a question related to the motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. Proceed.
What's the requirement to get a motion off the table? Is it just a simple majority?
Right. You moved to take the matter from the table at the next, if it's indefinitely tabled, then at the next meeting or any subsequent meeting, that motion's in order.
Okay. Thank you. The reason why I ask that is, this council doesn't have a good track record with getting an issue or an agenda item off the table. Once it's put on the table, in all the nine years I've been on the council, I don't think we've ever gotten an issue back off the table. So, I'm wondering if Councilman Euler and Councilman Grab would be open to giving it at least a deadline, so that we can ensure that we will continue to discuss this issue and find some resolution to it.
Do you hear any adjustment to the motion? So, there is some more discussion, but it's not related to the tabling. So, pardon me. Kelly?
Just a clarification.
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, to take something off the table, we have to have a majority vote. But I don't believe it can be considered at that meeting. It then is on the agenda for the next meeting. Is that, okay, just to be clear on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Council, you confirm that?
It can be brought up at a subsequent meeting, but not at the meeting at which that, if that motion prevails.
Okay. Thank you. We have a, is your comment related to this too?
Would not fall under the right procedures for that, so no. I will vote on the tabling accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to table and a second. Please cast your ballots.
No.
Councilmember Velpula?
Yeah.
Motion passes with two nays. Allen and Jensen.
We are at regular business. 22-343 is a communication from the City Manager with a request to approve a sole-source engagement with Patrick Engineering in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for grant applications to the Federal Rail Administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the proposal that we're bringing forward to hire Patrick Engineering. They were the firm that did the rail feasibility study. There's a subsequent agenda item that we have that takes up the funding for this. This would be a contract where they would team with Hanson Professional Services, who has worked on the project locally, as well as SB Friedman, who will be doing some of the economic impact work, and with Images Inc., who will be doing some of the communications work on this. This is for the application. There are two grant applications open for passenger rail, one that has a December 1 deadline, and the other that we anticipate will be released in December. The goal is to try and get the city of Peoria and the route up to Chicago into the future corridors pipeline, where there'll be additional funds that will come forward from the federal government, covering anywhere from 50% to 80% of the cost. And if that's the case, if we're able to get into that pipeline, that's where we'll turn to our friends at the Illinois Department of Transportation and urge their covering that, support of that next analysis piece, which is what they did for the cities of Moline and Rockford and others that have had new services, that are proceeding with new service requests here throughout the state of Illinois.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments, motion? Councilmember Ruckregel?
Yes. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Allen. Discussion. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, what is your estimate as to all the costs that the city is going to incur at first, regardless of grants? Okay? In other words, this is a quarter of a million dollars. How much is this going to cost the city, whether we get grant money or not? Not this item, all the items in prospect.
Well, again, I think if we look at the Moline route, the Quad Cities route, and we look at the Rockford route, when they started the process of developing the service development plans, it shifted away from the local communities and went to the state of Illinois to cover those costs. We would want to be treated in the same manner and look to go that same route, so that really, the only amount of local funds that are being generated are the $100,000 that the city has already committed to, the $50,000 the county has committed to, and then the $50,000 from the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and then $60,000 from the communities up north. And that's really it.
Well, the $250,000 is not the state. This is us, and we're going for a grant. Okay? Do we have more of those coming along, where we're paying, and we hope to get a grant to fund that obligation?
Well, that's the essence. This money is being used to apply for two grants that would cover anywhere from 50% to 80% of the next cost of doing the more detailed analysis. That analysis is probably going to be, you know, $5 million is what we'd probably be looking at to do that next level of work. But again, that's where we would turn and turn to the state and say, we would encourage you to treat us just like you treated Moline, just like you treated Rockford, and pick up the tab for the rest of the study. And that's something that we would love to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Do we still have, Councilmember Velpula, are you there? He's not on. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-344 is a communication from the City Manager and the Community Development Director with a request to approve funding for the Violence Prevention Program in the amount of $700,000.
Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask Community Development Director Doolin to come forward and just talk through the process that we've utilized for the Violence Prevention Grants and the recommendations that have come from the committee.
Director Doolin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Manager. If Council remembers, this has been an ongoing process the last month and a half. Council authorized us to put a request for proposals out to nonprofit and community partners to provide us direct programming in our community for violence reduction efforts. That RFP was issued for $700,000. Twelve applicants submitted proposals to the CDBG Public Advisory Commission, who graded those proposals. Those scores were attached to the council communication, and their recommendation to fund the top scores is included in that packet of information. Included in that is five organizations that are local organizations and have a track record of providing services in our community. The Dream Center, Peoria City County Health Department, HOI Big Brother, Big Sisters, Goodwill, and Peoria Friendship House would all provide programs directly, trying to provide positive impact on our residents in Peoria. All of the applicants are represented tonight in the council chambers. So, if you have any questions specifically on the programs that we'll be doing, we likely can get them up here to answer them. I want to thank all of the applicants who submitted a proposal to us, with a reminder to everyone that about three weeks ago, the city of Peoria was made aware that the state of Illinois was releasing the DCO $3 million violence funding to the city. About $500,000 of that will be going back through this process to fund additional programming in organizations for 2023 for violence reduction efforts in our community. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions anyone might have.
Just for starters, there's more money to be allocated, Director? Would, right? There's more, there's additional funding. How much is that additional funding?
As of right now, $500,000 from the DCO grant.
It's 500. So, would these, I mean, there's some additional organizations that got pretty high scores. Matter of fact, some of them were almost equal in terms of the rating, just a few centimeters of points away. Would those applicants have to reapply for funding? Or, I mean, how would that work?
I imagine a very similar application. I imagine a very similar application that they can tweak to submit, but it'll be very similar to the last one, so it won't require a significant amount of work. While we haven't gotten a significant amount of guidance from DCO about what would and wouldn't be required, which we're then hoping not much is required, there will be some requirements and likely some sort of RFP would have to be issued to make sure it's a fair and competitive process, so we would have to issue one. It'll be very, very similar, though, to the one we already issued, so applicants will have the option to kind of tweak the one they already submitted to us.
Okay. All right. I just want to thank those who were on the commission that had to rank these applications. That had to be a really tough job, and I see that a lot of the scores were really close, so that, thank them for all that work. And, you know, that takes a lot of reading, and comparing, and just a lot of effort. So, thank you for all those that contributed to that process. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I definitely want to thank the committee for reviewing these, and congratulations to those who are on the horizon to receive these funds if approved tonight. One of the things that I just wanted to state, you know, once this is approved tonight, is something that we may want to consider just in the horizon, is, you know, a lot of the feedback that I got when we started this process for RFPs was some of the maybe newer nonprofits, or some of the newer people who have established organizations, who may not have the infrastructure that some of these staple nonprofits have. You know, they may not be able to, they don't know what metrics they need to provide to be eligible for grants and things of that nature. So, I think that this is a good learning opportunity for those who have applied. Maybe if they weren't awarded funding this time, maybe we can give them some feedback, but maybe just even in the springtime, we consider some type of workshop or something along those lines. So then that way, you know, the smaller nonprofit or the newer nonprofit knows, you know, what are the key performance indicators I need to be tracking, so that way, when these next rounds of funding come, I can be eligible, you know, because we want to make sure that we are looking at everyone and giving everyone a fair chance, but we also know that there are criteria that you do need to meet in order to get external funding. So that's just something I wanted to say, but thank you to you and your team and the committee for reviewing these, and congratulations to our recipients. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, just want to echo those remarks, that this has just been a great process, and I think many of us, as we unveiled this back in the summer, were curious how it'd all play out. So, thank you to the Grants Department for providing us, as council members, with all of the information. Thank you to all 12 of the organizations that took the time and effort to do this, and personally, I'm very pleased to see this first 700,000 going to be on the agenda tonight and to move forward, and looking forward to see what DCEO has to tell us for the next tranche, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to ask one quick question.
Sure.
Tell us about accountability again. How will we know kind of return we're getting on this investment, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize for not mentioning this during my original discussion, but because of the nature of this funding, and there's a different, a few different levers to make sure that there's accountability from a grant standpoint, you know, we're pretty well-equipped to make sure that they're following the agreements and doing the programs in place. All of the applications did, they had indicated which program metrics they'd be measuring, and we can make sure that, kind of on a quarterly basis throughout the next year, we'll be reporting those back to council of what they are doing and aren't doing, and making sure that they're following all the grant requirements back and forth. I think, you know, I think this is a, Councilman Grab and I were at a neighborhood meeting last night, and we were talking about American Rescue Plan money, and Councilman Grab brought up to the Neighborhood Association about, you know, accountability for all the money we're spending with American Rescue Plan money, and making sure that the programs that we are doing are having measurable improvement. So, when the money does go away, we can have specific success to show what programs are and aren't working in the city of Peoria. So part of that will come with quantitative measures to ensure these programs are being successful, and so that is one of the things that we'll make sure to be reporting back to council, kind of on a routine basis going forward with this.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Well, since Councilman Seer delayed us two minutes, I'll take it three. Maybe, you know, not the right program suggestions, I don't know, but I think it's important to be cognizant of the fact that our school district applied for a couple of things here, and we didn't approve those. And we talk a lot in the horseshoe and outside of here amongst each other about challenges with the school district and the impact that that has on our community, and hopefully with more money coming, maybe we can figure out how to work with them to help figure out how to move them in a more positive direction. Like I said, I don't know anything necessarily about their programs or what their ideas were, but I think, you know, if we're going to spend money addressing these types of things, that's probably a good place to start, and so if we could get in front of trying to help them figure out how we can be more helpful to them, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Doolin. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three four five is a communication from the city manager and the community development director with a request to approve a grant award in the amount of $600,000 in home funds to Phoenix Community Development Services for the construction of Madison III.
Manager? Director Doolin?
Turn it right back to Director Doolin again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Tonight, you are being asked to approve essentially what's some gap financing for a project that Phoenix Community Development Services is proposing to construct in downtown Peoria. Christine Call is with us, so I'd like to her to come up and talk about the project. Can do it much better than I can, but the city of Peoria is an entitlement community, so we get a certain allocation from CDBG Home and ESG funds every year. Specifically, home funds have to be used to expand affordable housing in our community. So this money has to go towards programs and organizations like Phoenix Community Development Services to support that mission, and the work that Christine and her team have done in our community with the multitude of projects allows us to be very supportive of this. So with that, if the mayor would allow, I would like to hand the floor over to Christine to talk specifically about the project.
Absolutely. Ms. Call? Glad to have you here.
Thank you. So this project, Madison Apartments III, is obviously the third in the series that there along the 200 block of Madison, and this development is affordable housing, that's a permanent supportive housing for homeless youth between the ages of 18 to 24. That is the largest age demographic around our growing homeless population in the community. And yet, it's the population that, right now, many of them sit on the waitlist because they don't tend to be as vulnerable and need, you know, so they don't come to the top of the waitlist oftentimes. And so the idea here is to kind of carve them out, do some adolescent-specific activities and stuff with them that has to do with fostering them onto a higher level of independence. This project fits with an agreement that is already in place between HUD, the Peoria Housing Authority, and the Homeless Continuum of Care, which the city of Peoria and our agency are members, and that was an initiative called Fostering Youth to Independence. And so this fits with an agreement that's already in place. There's just been no dedicated housing capacity for this group.
Any questions for Ms. Call? Councilmember Grab?
Welcome. I do have a question in reference to the target population for the additional 16 units. Eighteen to 24, correct? Are they homeless, or are they homeless and having substance abuse issues? Do we have caseworkers that will be on hand to help them? How is this going to work? Because I want this to really complement what we're trying to do in our community, and certainly in the downtown, where you already have a wonderful footprint.
Correct. So first of all, they would still have to meet the federal definition of homelessness under the HUD regulations. This, the money we're requesting tonight matches a little over $4 million in other capital sources, some of which are HUD, so the definition will prevail. However, what we do know is that many of these 18 to 24-year-olds are youth who aged out of the child welfare system and then had nowhere else to go. So they're presenting on the street, a significant number of them are also LGBTQ youth. We know that anecdotally through the work that we're already doing with that population. And yes, as with all of our permanent supportive housing programs, onsite wraparound supportive services will be available. Service participation is voluntary, but it will include everything from mental health services to access to a whole plethora of other services, whatever it is that that person needs to stay housed.
Good. Excellent. I guess I'll go ahead, even though my council peers may want to comment, but I'll put a motion on the floor to approve as outlined.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Discussion, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Call, you probably know what my comments are going to be. There, we have 16 units here. How many of these folks will be in per unit?
One per unit. They are a combination of studio and one-bedroom apartments that was designed that way because it's a very narrow footprint, so to comply with all the ordinance, you know, density requirements and square foot requirements of the capital funder, that was what we came to. So it's one person per unit.
Well, I am not in your business, nor am I in the construction business, but I find that $310,000 per unit, I cannot understand that kind of expense. You could buy 16 houses for that and have money left over. I, I... I hope you understand, I'm not going after you, but it seems like with these programs, we've got all kinds of people along the way who get paid very well. I remember the architect for the 30 houses up on the east bluff had four designs of rather nice arts and craft homes. Architect made three, or made $750,000 for four designs you could find in a home book and get plans for. I don't understand this. I think, frankly, I think it's scandalous. It's just one person, one apartment, studio apartment, whatnot, $310,000. Thank you, Ms. Call. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Call, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you also for your work as part of the Continuum of Care. And I know that you've got a lot of active partners on there, being able to make a huge significant difference within our community. Thank you also for taking on this project, because you talked about that gap that it hits. And the thing that, whenever I read this proposal coming through here, I thought about was what a substantial foundational set of years. Those are, those are that transition. They're aging out in a lot of cases, like you said, and they're being missed due no fault of their own. But being missed during those couple of years can change the trajectory of somebody's life forever. I also understand, too, that you are providing a lot of other services besides just a place to be housed. There's support, there's counseling, there's maybe help as they go to tackle those things that, a young person may have a family or other people that they would normally turn to, but you're filling that gap as well. Thank you for this project. Thank you for what you've done for other projects, but this one, I think, is really nice on how you have focused in on an area. And I know the Continuum of Care, you know, over the past couple of years has seen some numbers come down, and we're in a very different economic state, and so we're seeing a couple of numbers come up, which means this is even more important now than it's ever been. I appreciate all of your work.
Thank you. Councilmember Riegenbach, did you want to weigh in?
I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to echo many of the things that Councilman Ruck Regal just said, so hats off to Phoenix. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, ditto, Councilman Ruck Regal. I agree with all his sentiments. I appreciate all the great work that you're doing, and you're changing lives in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes with one nay. Kelly? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three four six is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Peoria County, the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and the North Central Illinois Council of Governments to apply for passenger rail funding.
Manager? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the intergovernmental agreement between the city, the county, Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, and the North Central Illinois Council of Governments, which includes financial participation from the cities of LaSalle, Peru, Ottawa, Utica, and Morris for the rail effort. This would be $260,000 raised. If we don't spend it, we would send the dollars back proportionally, so happy to answer any questions about the agreement, but this will be the mechanism by which we'll collect the funds to pay the engagement that you've just approved.
Any questions? Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Member Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three three one is a communication from the city manager and chief diversity and inclusion officer with a request to concur with the Joint Commission on Racial Justice and Equity to adopt an ordinance regarding the racial equity impact assessment.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'd like to request a two-week deferral on this item to come back with some kind of examples of how the ordinance would work and just share that with council, so if we could respectfully request a two-week deferral, that would be great.
Can I get a motion to defer? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Riegenbach. Questions? Discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed ordinance has a couple rather clear parts to it. How, and the question remains in my mind. How are we going to take each and every item that we do around here and figure out how it's going to affect minority communities? I think the answers are going to be subjective, not objective. I think it's going to be very, very difficult. There'll be two sides to many of the stories, whatnot. And then I come back around to, I think we're doing a pretty good job in this building. Probably not perfect, but a pretty good job, and we're going to add another layer, and it's going to be a lot of work. And what's going to be the result? I think, my own guess, almost nothing. I don't know that anything will change, except that we will be doing more work to prove, to prove that we're not discriminating, or that we care, or something like that. That's, you know, if that's not demonstrated currently, well, you know, maybe we're lacking, but I'm going to oppose deferral because I don't know, if the manager comes back with some wonderful examples, et cetera, it's the same. with some wonderful examples, et cetera, it's the same issue, it seems to me. Do we need this kind of thing on every single thing we do? And go back in history and find out that in...
Because every single thing you do. I think the examples will help.
It says any. It does not specify, Madam Mayor. It says any. And it came back, any, on the... I know you and I disagree with this, and I think... and I hope we do respectfully, but I'm not going to be in favor of deferral because I think that we already kind of know what we're going to get and how it's just sort of mushy. And I think we do a good job now. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And I would just ask for approval of deferral. We have a commission comprised of one hundred and fifty volunteers that's been working over a year, and this is a recommendation, an assessment tool, racial equity assessment tool that they've proposed, and similar tools have been used in communities around the nation. So I think we owe that to them to give some consideration, to have more discussion, explore the examples given, and get a better understanding of how this actually works in practice. Because I think that's where the confusion comes out. How does this actually work in practice? And I think by next meeting, we'll have a better understanding of that. So we have a motion to defer. There's no other discussion. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes with three nays, Kelly, Euler, and Ruck Regal. Council... Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three-four-seven is a communication from the city manager with a request to adopt an ordinance setting the compensation for at-large council members of the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Is this legal? Ma... Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did prepare the ordinance that would just continue with the current salaries for the council and the auto allowance, and that was, I think, based upon the guidance that we had when we had the previous discussion for council's consideration.
Okay. Councilmember Graebe?
Won't put any of the at-large people on the spot. I move for approval.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Allen. I'm sorry. What was that? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Can the at-large members vote on this, or is that... Yes? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
There's no other discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash three-four-eight is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to receive and file the 2023 revised budget. And on your desk, you each should have received a bound copy of the proposed revised budget.
Mr. Manager? Sorry about that delay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to Finance Director Craddy to talk through the kind of the schedule. This is really just, we're handing you off the budget this evening pursuant to the budget calendar, and then we'll get into the budget in earnest. But, Director?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. In front of you tonight is the revised 2023 budget. The document that you have in front of you is broken down into the budget message, as well as our revenues and expenditures for the year, as well as our capital improvement plan that we're recommending. We will be bringing the discussion back on November the eighteenth for deliberation through city council, as well as having a presentation on the budget itself, with the anticipated approval of the budget on November the fifteenth, depending on the discussion and deliberation. As the manager said, tonight, we're just putting this on the table. If you have any questions on that, we're more than happy to answer.
Discussion, Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moved to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Oh, that's what everybody wanted to do then. Okay. If there's no other discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen? Councilmember Velpula? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business.
Is there any other... is there any unfinished business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
I want to point out that new business wasn't recorded on the agenda, and because it wasn't recorded on the agenda, legally are we able to have new business? Mr. Hayes?
Because this is an open meeting, we can discuss any matter, whether it's on the agenda or not. We just cannot take final action on any matter.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any new business? Councilmember Graebe?
Manager Uricher, your designee, speak to the council tonight about these Oxford houses that are appearing and that are creating quite some consternation for many of our constituents.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think what I'd like to do is...
Turn the floor over to Corporation Counsel Hayes and let Mr. Hayes talk through this issue.
Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city received complaints earlier this year that some halfway houses were operating in residential areas. The staff took action and filed a citation, and we received correspondence from an attorney representing Oxford House, a series of Oxford houses, five of which are now operating in the city of Rockford, or the city of Peoria. I'll probably make that mistake a couple of times, and I apologize, but I had this role in Rockford for eleven years, so I'll try to develop better habits. In any regard, as you know, our zoning ordinance addresses group living, and there are a number of measures in that ordinance that this attorney took issue with. Your staff took that very seriously, started investigating our ordinances as related to Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. Recovery from alcohol and substance abuse addiction is a disability recognized by the Americans with Disabilities Act and protected under the federal Fair Housing Act. And so our ordinances have to come within line of case law and federal statute with regard to what restrictions we're able to place on group homes inhabited by people with the disability of recovery from addiction. This is the substance of what the attorney was raising with us. Now, Oxford House represents or operates these types of facilities throughout the nation. They are independent of any onsite personnel. The individuals that inhabit that, as explained in the materials we've delivered to you today, they run the houses, as they put it, much like a family unit under a democratic process. So it is not an assisted living facility, as we might commonly understand it, but because there's that... they say that because there's that group of individuals going through the same processes in life, that's a supporting structure that helps them succeed. This model is, as I mentioned, deployed in a number of areas. It's deployed even in central Illinois. There are four of these operating in Bloomington-Normal since 2019. So staff engaged outside council to assist with analysis of our ordinances here in Peoria, as well as this challenge from this attorney. We presented some materials for you and some options for the council to consider. It's staff's intention to gather the input from the council, the appropriate steps to take, and then have this matter before the zoning, planning and zoning at the next cycle. We'd like to invite the council members to review the materials that we presented and come to us with your questions. We've made a recommendation in there on being a little reserved in what I'm describing because I don't want to invite litigation. I think we can resolve this hopefully without litigation, but there is a potential outcome of this matter depending on the choices that the council takes and then the reaction that Oxford House might take here. I do think there are some issues that the council's going to want to take action on. It's just there's a couple of different options for us to explore with you. The time between the initiation of this and now has been utilized by your staff to thoroughly investigate this and present you with the best possible options. And so at this point, we've given you quite a volume of material. I think the material fully discloses to you the facts as your staff knows it at this time, including where these houses are located throughout the community and what our experience has been with them to date. I will just mention that we had... the staff had initiated an enforcement action and has delayed any further action on those enforcement actions until we're able to get direction from the council and then take the appropriate next steps. So at this point, the matter hasn't escalated to litigation in any form, and we're hopeful to get guidance from the council and take the appropriate action before that occurs. If there's any other specific questions, I'm happy to address them. We certainly understand the importance to get this right and execute this for the best outcome for the city of Peoria, and we'll hope to do that as a team going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Additional questions? Councilwoman Graebe?
First of all, these folks are not following our rules. Secondly, the Peoria City Council knows very well how to analyze sober treatment facilities. Councilman Regenbach and I have both been part of a process involving residents in our districts with consequent, subsequent approvals given by this elected body for sober treatment houses. They were all subject to inspection for life safety. Unlike this apparent organization, I have talked to staff about what kind of inspections have occurred, how many people are being allowed to live in one bedroom. We had a similar phenomenon a number of years ago, and we had a packed house at Holy Family Gymnasium to object to the inclusion of these. They just cropped up almost overnight with no one... no public hearing process. In that particular case, we had people who had all kinds of issues, including sexually dangerous people, no review, no inspection, warehousing people, and collecting a lot of money. And so our residents now are finding out that we have these that have occurred apparently on all of our watches with no review, with no life safety review, and here we subject, you know, the people who want to do a short-term rental to endless discussions and review and having to jump through hoops, life safety hoops, et cetera. Same thing with the sober treatment houses that did everything right, and somehow there's something special about Oxford. There's nothing special about Oxford. And you know what? Every time someone wants to threaten a lawsuit against the city of Peoria, if we roll over and play dead, we got a problem. We have a real problem. We need to know exactly what's going on in these houses, who's there, et cetera, if they're being warehoused, if they're meeting life safety, and they should be put through the same process as any other special use. None of us, none of us have any problem with people who need the kind of help that is being provided by Oxford House, but they're not playing in accord with our rules. Somehow, they're better than our own internally-generated people who provide these services. Now, that's not right. And, you know, we're going to give everybody a fair shot, but these may not just appear next door to somebody's house without the same process that we've used for everything else. And I'm just appalled that it happened, that it was allowed to happen, that the people were allowed to go into these houses and remain there by our staff, that the council is just finding out about this? This is mind-boggling to me, and I find this to be a communication lapse that is highly egregious and unacceptable. And we got five of these, Corporation Counsel, already operating. Is that what I heard you say? Five? By whose authority? What manager did we have any life safety inspections? Did we?
In this instance, no, we did not.
That's a problem. It's a big problem. Well, I'll let my colleagues weigh in on this, but I've never seen anything quite... well, I did, because the... when we had the problem with all the neighbors showing up complaining, we had a guy fly in on a Lear jet out of Chicago, and he just told everybody how wrong they were to be concerned about the way he was warehousing people over in the fourth district and how backward we were here in Peoria, and that they needed to assist him in continuing to make huge sums of money with no respect to our neighborhoods, none, no respect to our neighborhoods or our citizens. And needless to say, that city council ran him out of town. He got back on his Lear jet and took off, and our staff put an end to it. We put an end to sexually dangerous people in that particular case. I'm not saying that's applying here, but how would I know? I have no idea. We haven't even reviewed these. Put an end to what was happening over there with children only a few feet away. We had, Mayor, we had such a wonderfully thorough job done with Rabjohn's proposals, and they passed, and it was no problem, but they were subject to our rules. Now we got these hotshots from out of town who are very litigious. "Oh, I'm sorry. I should just bow down and say, 'I'm afraid of you.'" No, that's not how it works. We need to be concerned about what it's doing to our neighborhoods and the reception that this is having in our neighborhoods, and we need to protect them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. There's one issue in here that I can't seem to get past to even analyze the others. How is it that having more folks under one roof with the same disability is a reasonable accommodation for someone with a disability? I guess I could process it maybe if there was a caretaker-type situation involved, but I'm not getting their idea that having more people with that same disability under the same roof is a reasonable accommodation that triggers this to happen.
So I understand your suspicion about the success of their model. I am not a defender of the Oxford House model. I can tell you that in matters throughout the nation, they've been successful establishing these houses and operating them for long periods of time without major incidents. I don't know how successful the individuals are in the process, but as far as the operational aspects, they're not highly disruptive in many of the communities that they operate in. So they feel that the model has efficacy, and they've been operating them successfully in a number of venues. Whether they'll operate here successfully or not, I don't know.
And I can understand the success of the concept. My concern is why do they need to exceed our ordinance for the number of people that can live on the premises? Why is that a reasonable accommodation? You know, if our ordinance is for... just throwing a number out here, and they can have four, why is... why do they... why do they need six or eight? I don't understand why it needs to exceed our ordinance, and that's an allowable accommodation.
We're approaching issues. That's why we express these things to you in writing and under attorney-client privilege. But I'll just indicate that there are some types of group homes that our municipality allows to operate with these number of peoples in them. And so the issue becomes treating people with a disability differently than other individuals who are entitled to live in that manner creates the tension with the Americans Disability Act and the federal Fair Housing Act. And so whether that model's successful or not isn't really the issue. You're treating people who are protected under these acts differently because of that disability, and that's where the matter becomes actionable. So we're trying to avoid that. I will just indicate that there will be standards imposed going forward if we can figure out the appropriate way in our ordinance to deal with this facility. We've delayed our enforcement action to this point. That doesn't mean there won't be treating these facilities similar to other facilities that we do regulate, apply our ordinances to and our standards to. So we're anticipating doing that going forward, once we know the correct path and make the appropriate adjustments to our regulations and ordinances and things.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Words matter. Words have definitions. It sounds like, and you use the word establish, that they have them, you know, you talked about that Oxford House has them other places. To me, it sounds like a business. Business, and I'm assuming, I mean, I'll ask a question. Is this a business? Is there a transactional exchange for service and money that creates the family unit? Either short-term, long-term, I don't know how long they stay, how long they don't. And I believe in being able to build, provide models that actually provide support. My question is, are we talking about a business here? Because some, you know, a family usually has one house. Maybe they have a couple of houses, you know, maybe they have a little cabin. But just in the conversation tonight, we hear of Oxford House, the family, being all over the place. I don't know that you can be a family and a business, operate on one foot on each side of those definitions. Or am I wrong? Or is this not a business? There is no revenue generated? There is no expense? This is all out of the goodness of somebody's heart?
So I won't hazard a guess at your answering your question completely because I don't have a complete answer for you. I'll share with you, my understanding is that there is a landlord-tenant relationship between the owner of the structure or the parcel and the residents that live there. They share the expenses of operating that household, the residents do, under an agreement between and among those residents. Beyond that, I don't have insight into the revenue model, if any, that flows to or from Oxford House.
So if somebody wants to operate a restaurant, they want to do it in a neighborhood, then they don't want to have regulation. So they say, you know what? Everybody here is part of my family. And they're paying me to come to dinner, and we have family dinner between 8:00 in the morning and 7:00 at night. And by the way, family stops by at any time you want to and eat at the table, but you leave some money. I mean, I don't, you get where I'm going. Then all of a sudden, a restaurant can operate as a family inside of a neighborhood without regulation. And it seems like we've created, we have in our ordinances some rules that people can operate in. And I think we've, as Councilmember Graham said, we've had some very wonderful examples of this coming forward and playing by the ordinances. And wow, you know, I think, I think back on one of those Rabjohn Houses that was opened, and I think Councilmember Rigenbach was part of that. And the neighborhoods who had some questions were with welcome arms to have them as part of the neighborhood. So it's not like people don't want to have solutions. But there is a proper channel to go through. So I guess my ultimate question, which you boil us down to, because as, unless we can figure out, is this a business or not? That's got to be the fundamental question first before anything else. Thank you.
My response may not be as direct as you'd like. But the issue here is that we do have a process that would apply under our ordinance. The problem is it treats this group home differently because the people who inhabit it are disabled. Our ordinance singles that out. And there's the issue that we need to resolve before we can go forward with the other elements that would apply to make certain it meets with all the criteria that other group homes meet with. We have to fix this issue one way or the other. Either, and there's a series of options explained and a recommendation from us in, from the legal department in the materials. And I just call your attention to that, and then we'll continue this conversation. In the meantime, we'll be looking into those answers to the question that couldn't be as direct as I would have preferred with you this evening.
I'll up with that. If you can provide additional information to us. You know, just because we're getting comments from our constituents, our neighbors, our family. Are these people from people inside our community, from outside of our community? If I know somebody who needs treatment and support, where do I send them? What does a pamphlet look like? What does the program look like? And so these are, I think, are important things to know, what Oxford House is as we start this conversation, not later on. And I'd like to see that as part of the legal information that we have so that we know what we're actually talking about here is what is the business model? Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had other new business.
Before you go to new business, I'd like to... Before you go to the other new business, can we, I think there's some additional comments on this one, isn't it? Did you have other new business? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to talk on this too.
Okay, just a moment. Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Corporation Counsel Hayes, you may not have context on this, but traditionally, would a group home be announced to the neighborhood? It's entering some type of notice or anything like that? Is that a precedence?
Some of the group homes authorized under our ordinances presently are able to establish and operate without any public hearing. It's an administrative process. Other group homes are subject to a special use process. This different treatment on the basis of a disability is the crux of the challenge that Oxford House has brought to our ordinance. So yes, there are group homes that are established through a purely administrative process without a series of public hearings like our zoning process, under our present ordinance. And so that happens as the ordinary course of business. People seek the opportunity to prove out their performance uses. They do so, and they get authority from the zoning official to operate going forward. In answer to your question, yes, that occurs now for some select group home living situations.
Yeah, thank you. That's good context because I think the challenge that we're receiving from our constituents is, you know, they get a notice about a short-term rental coming or an Airbnb, however you want to categorize it. But something along this line, the unknown that's around it, not knowing, you know, not being able to have that conversation, and, you know, people fear the unknown. And so I'm excited that you all are looking into this, and I look forward to our further discussion and review on your recommendations. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Corporation Counsel Hayes, I just, real quick, want to thank you for the thorough memorandum that you provided us today. I think the option that you're recommending, just by amending the family care facility definition, is a good option, which I support. And I think that that will solve all, I think, almost all the issues that have been discussed here tonight. So I think that's a good solution. And so again, I thank you and the staff for your work on this. And hopefully, after the rest of the council has time to review it, a majority will support that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly, were you wanting to comment on this topic? Yes, please. Yes.
Mr. Corporation Counsel, I think I understand your reason for wishing to meet with us and so we can have a frank discussion. There are, I think, some public points that can be brought forward in anticipation of that. We've had, with this particular outfit, we've had a number of police problems through the year, up through the end of August, including nuisance items, loud music, parties, you know, that sort of thing. And also including two cases of overdose. In, okay, so I... Do you think it is possible for us to include in our ordinance the ability to, or to require in our ordinance supervisory personnel being in such group homes for people with disabilities? This would be a person who is not, as perhaps Councilman Euler suggested or alluded to, not a person of that disability, a staff person that can handle problems. Is that a, do you think that might be able to be added to that ordinance? Or perhaps you'd rather not say at this point?
We will look into that, and I wouldn't want to, and I'll come tonight to that question in this venue. But I'd be happy to discuss that more directly with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had an item on the consent agenda regarding the welcome signs on the southern gateway, and the crux of the matter was purchasing some land. But I hope everybody took time to look at the welcome sign that's proposed and how beautiful that is. And, Mr. Manager, I'm just curious, is that something we're producing in-house? Or is that something we're contracting out? And what's the ballpark cost on that?
Well, this was part of a budgeted item that we put in about a southern gateway entrance to the city and replacing the sign. I believe that that design was done outside of the city and prepared by consultants for us, and ultimately, we'll be building it to that spec.
I'm just curious if that's something that could be utilized at other gateways to the city, whether, obviously, we don't have a lot of money to buy land.
Short answer is yes. I think we can, I think we can look at other places to replicate the entrance point in doing that. Director Powers just walked in. Maybe he can add a little bit more context for you.
Good evening.
Sorry, Counsel, I missed some of your commentary. I was coming from 404. It was architecturally designed for that corridor. I believe you said it would be a welcome feature in other corridors to the city. We do have that, I would say, as a long-range plan. North, southeast, and west corridors are pretty common in most cities, and I think they would be welcome. This particular design is out of the right of way. There are a number of ways to make gateways. They're very popular. They're very attractive. They invariably spur economic development because it says welcome. So that was the whole idea. That is actually an illuminated sign. So there's LED within the letters. Frog issued this evening. But there's lighting within each of the letters. So it's going to be, it's going to pop, as I think the manager would say.
Well, it's beautiful, and will be a welcome addition. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Any other new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and we have not received any cards.
Okay.
So then we would be on to executive session. I do not believe we have an executive session, so then we're adjourned.
Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Jensen? Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Valpula? We are adjourned. Thank you for your service.